I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council, Monday, March 12th. I'd ask you all, I want you to rise to salute the flag.
Attendants first.
Excuse me, sorry, I got ahead of myself, I apologize. If the clerk will read the, will do the roll first.
Counsel Gabon.
Here.
Counsel Delasola.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel DePiero.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel Marquesi.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Here.
Counsel Siminelli.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
Eleven members present, you have a court.
Yeah.
Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, honor our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President?
Counsel McLaughlin. President, just briefly, I just wanted to let the committee know that Pope John won tonight in their basketball game at the TD Garden. Pope John beat Man- Marshville tonight. And also wish the Everett Crimson Tide the best of luck at 7:45 tonight, they tip off at the TD Garden, so hopefully we'll have two wins in the city of Everett tonight. Wish them the best of luck as well.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number four. We need to take public participation first, so if I can have a motion to open public participation.
Second.
Public hearing.
Public hearing first, Mr. President.
Second.
You have it.
Okay, clerk will read item number one.
Item number one, Mr. President, is to all parties interested in the public hearing for National Grid requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, along and across the following public way, McKinley Street, National Grid to install one SO pole on McKinley Street, National Grid to install one SO pole, owned guy stub pole number 2056-1, and anchor guy.
Counselman DeFlorio.
Do we have the petitioner here?
They are here.
If we have the petitioner, come before us.
Thank you, I have a couple of pictures if you'd like to view.
Good evening, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Michael Cordima, National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street in Walden.
Thank you, Counselman DeFlorio.
Now, you have installed new poles or you're adding to the existing poles?
This is a brand-new pole, yes.
Brand-new poles, and there's no other poles there?
This is a support pole, say you're a transformer pole and you start to lean over, there's two services pulling you over, so they have to put me over here in order to put a wire across.
So it's going to be a double pole?
Across the street.
Let me see the picture first, I'm sorry. Oh, Fred, would you?
That's all right, I see it. Good job.
So basically, it's not going to be near the other pole, you're supporting it, but it's going to be across from the other pole to support it.
Exactly.
Okay, because I'm against double poles, that's why I asked you that, there's double poles all over the city, so. I'm sorry. Okay, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Cordina, there are some residents that live on Thurmond Street, which is right next to McKinley, and they're concerned about how long this project will be, could you answer that?
Normally it just takes, they could actually put the pole and wire in in less than a day.
Less than a day, and the other, will there be any power outages?
No, no, this is all mechanical rather than electrical.
No power outages, okay, great, because that's one of the nicest neighborhoods in ever, just so you know, it's a very beautiful neighborhood, and you're going to put the sidewalk and the street back together the way it was?
Yep, you bet.
Thank you.
Counselman Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, through to the gentleman, I'm looking at the, I need to see the picture one more time.
Sure.
Sorry. Yeah, sir?
Yes.
I'm looking at the guy wire that's going to go down onto the edge of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Is there going to be, is that going to be like a pole?
It's just a little rod, probably that far out of the ground.
Okay.
And the braces to leave room in the sidewalk, then it'll come down, the wire will come straight down, and we'll put that yellow visibility thing on it.
Okay, but I was kind of interested in that rod, you're saying that's only going to be like, I mean, the pole is only going to be a foot above the ground?
About that high, it has the head on it, and the wires just go down and attach into it.
I've seen them before, and they cause a little bit of trouble, I'd like to see that about four feet high.
Four feet?
Yeah, I mean, that would be very visible even during a rain, a snowstorm, you know, because a foot, tonight, that would be buried in the snow, that's what I'm saying, so you wouldn't see it.
That's for sure, all right, I'll mention that to my overhead.
Okay, that's what I would just like to see, and, which time, and it's going to serve, it's going to serve, what, one person or this?
It's supposed to follow a staff.
Is the whole thing just to put up a guy pole?
That's all.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon.
Counsel McKinnon, through you, Mr. President, to the guest, so, let me see, so, we're going to put a pole across the street from this?
Yes, it's called a guy stub.
All right, and this pole's been like this for how long now, it's been, it's been there for a while, like that?
It takes time for that to happen, and there's two wires in the back that serve that building with Dunkin' Donuts and the cigar shop.
Yeah.
And this is going to stabilize it.
Now, is, there's no way to replace the pole and put this gear back on top of it?
It would happen again, sir.
Really?
It would, yeah.
So it's pulling, basically, the, all the wiring and stuff, it's, the weight of the wires is pulling it?
Yep.
So this, this right here will be across the street, and it will just hold this up? Will it be pulling it back?
They, they'll probably try to tension it up to pull it back some.
And it will be safe for, you know, people to walk underneath and all that stuff?
That's right, that's why I put that strut guy in, which opens the sidewalk up.
Now, when you, when you're opening the side, sidewalks up and stuff like that, you'll be filling it back with concrete?
Absolutely.
All right, because it, it seems like a big, kind of a, a unique structure, I mean, look at, look at the structure, it's going to be across the street near an elderly center, you know, so that, that right there is kind of, you know, it's kind of odd-looking, I just want, I, for when, because I get calls on this, and I know it's Counselman DePiero's side there, but we're going to get calls on it, they're going to say, you know, why, why are they doing this, instead of just replacing the pole and all that stuff, so I just wanted to hear what you had to say about that, how, how much digging are you going to be doing on this area as well?
Well, the pole, at 40 feet in height, they'll dig about six, six to eight feet to install it.
Down?
Correct.
Okay.
And they'll fill the hole, and they'll replace that sidewalk panel.
All right, and how long should it take?
About one day, well, sidewalk, the cut, and then the, the pole and the guy wire take about a day, for the civil department to come out, it could be the next day, something like that, but they wouldn't leave it like that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we see that again, Leo? Seeing as there's no more speakers, Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, there's a gentleman that is in the chamber tonight that asks, that lives in that area, the pole is bent right now, crooked.
It's leaning, yes.
It's leaning, and it's got heavy material on it, a couple of tons up there, a couple of refrigerators.
Yeah, if you would, yeah.
Is that, that pole will be replaced?
They're not replacing that, they're just supporting it, it's a fairly new pole, but it's just that the weight of those service cables is pulling it this way, as well as the telephone and cable TV stuff.
So the pole will be straightened out once you do this? Take the bend out of it, Mr. President, you clearly can see in the picture that the pole is bent, let's fix, I'm not going to vote for this, I want a new pole, the pole is bent, you're putting this gadget up there to brace it, right?
To prevent it from going over some more, sir.
Some more, why don't we replace the pole, what's the problem?
Well, we have to support it according to our engineering standards, it should have been done a long time ago.
Should have been done, Mr. President, this is what I'm talking about, when, you know, we've been very kind to you over the years here.
Okay.
Put a new pole up, please, I'm not going to vote for this, and I don't think any of us should, but take a look at the picture, the pole is, is bent, maybe if you put a new pole up, you don't need this device.
Can't happen, sir, the standards call for that pole to be there, I installed that second service at the end, the Dunkin' Donuts building at the end, and that was done a number of years ago, and that just added that much more weight and stress on that pole, so.
I can suggest to you, Mr. Cordina, and you bring our concerns to the company, when do you plan on doing this work?
If the petition passes, they'll do it, I don't know, they'll just schedule it, I can't say for sure the date.
Mr. President, this is a multi-million dollar corporation, they, they've got to replace the pole, it's bent, I wouldn't want it in front of my house, it looks unsafe, and it, it makes sense, fix the pole, you get it right, we've dealt with issues with double poles here and everything else, look at, I wouldn't want that in front of my house, Mr. Cordona, it's a defective pole.
It's leaning.
Not seriously.
It's, it's actually leaning.
I know it's leaning.
It's not bent, but it's leaning.
And that's one of the reasons why you're putting this device there, so let's put a, did I hear somebody say they were suggesting Senate to committee?
Yeah, Senate Public Utilities.
I, I don't get it, Mr. Cordona, you've been very reasonable here, and we have been too, but the pole needs to be corrected, it's a defective pole, let's stay on the right track, well, I'll, I have no further questions.
Counsel Gabon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, if I could ask the council to pass that picture across, thank you very much, I understand the need, clearly it needs to be supported, what kind of process, did you say it can't be replaced, the existing pole, is it just too much on it, that no matter what you put in there is going to end up leaning?
Well, the pole has had its own natural lean from the base.
Okay.
Due to all that cable that's going on there, I couldn't highlight it for you too well because of, but that's what's caused the lean, so the support pole, they'll, they'll straighten the original pole, I'll make sure of that, they'll straighten that one, this one here, we'll keep it straight, rather than, well, whatever the council decides.
Okay, all right, and anyway, I echo the, the concerns of my colleague, if you look at it, basically, we're adding another pole across the street, we're going to have the harness wire come down, you've got an open green space, and what we're doing is, and I understand from your point of view it's a necessity, but you have an open green space that now we're blighting with a pole and a cable wire and a wire going across the street, that's not the image we want for the city of Everett, so I think that there's got to be a better way to do it, and I understand that that pole has to be addressed, because if it's left unaddressed, it's going to be, create a serious safety issue for everybody, there's been some discussion here, and I think, I'm sensing that my colleagues are looking to put it in committee, where this is a public hearing, we'll have to go through the process, it might end that way, and, you know, I, I could understand a temporary arrangement just until a new pole could be done, but I would not want to see something like this on a permanent basis, because you're taking clear view, trees, grass, which is a premium in the city of Everett, and now we're going to stick a pole, a guide wire, and one across the street, and that's, that's not the vision of Everett that I have, so I, I don't have any other questions, because I do think that the issues will be addressed in committee, so, thank you.
Make a motion to send it to Public Utility.
You still have a public hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, one moment, we have, I have three more speakers who have not spoken yet, okay, Counsel Del Sol.
Good evening, if a new pole was put up, how long would it last before it starts tilting like the one is now?
Well, I have to go back and look at the situation over, counselor, and talk to my supervisor in some of the overhead form and see what they think is best, but there's a lot of stress on that pole from all the service.
I know it's going to go to committee, I just wanted to ask that question in case somebody was wondering.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I'm all set.
Counsel McLaughlin.
My only quick question is, how long of a timeline do we have before something worth happening to this pole, if it's already leaning today, is this something of a dire emergency?
It's been that way, I don't know how long, it, it's in the hands of fate, if a plow hit it tonight, it could cause that problem, it could do something, but.
Okay, so it's something that needs to be addressed sooner than later?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselman DePiero.
I'd like to excuse our guest, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, attend to motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Public, public hearing is open, one asked three times, in favor, and then I'm going to ask three times again, is anyone in favor of this item? Is anyone in favor of this item? Is anyone in favor of this item? Okay, close that portion of the meeting, is anybody opposed to this item, sir, if you'd please come in and state your name, in case.
I haven't planned on this.
Not as easy as it looks.
I'm Robert Behannon, I live at 66 Thurmond Street, which is right at the corner of McKinley, and I see this pole every morning as I look out my kitchen window, there is a lean to the pole, but it's not a lean from the base, it is actually bowed at the middle, the weight of the transformers at the top of the pole have caused this, and the material of the pole is starting to, I guess you'd call, delaminate, as the lean gets more and more, or the bow gets more and more, the lamentations start to get more spaced, and it's more spaced on the McKinley Street side because it's leaning in towards the apartment side, it's been like that for, ever since they put it up, I can remember there only being two transformers up there, with the third transformer at the far pole at the Broadway, at some point in time, they had moved that third transformer down, and they also established another transformer on a pole at the corner of Thurmond and McKinley Street, and I believe there's another transformer further up around 62 Thurmond Street, so they have at least four to five transformers within a four-pole range there, and I know it's a high voltage area because of the, the resonance, but the, the setup that he has here is, is not really a fix, it's just something that almost blight the neighborhood, and I've been waiting for storms like we've had in the, the last couple of three weeks, with either the high wind or the heavy wet snow, building up either on the transformer or the wires to take it down, we've been lucky for maybe the last four or five years that that hasn't happened, but it gets progressively worse on the, on the bow each year because of the, the weight at the top.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you guys wanting to get the pole done, they can get a pole that's straight, I think the pole was partly bowed when they put it up, it didn't happen overnight, and if, if you, if you don't set up a straight structure, it's going to naturally go in whichever direction the, the weight tends to, like water.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else opposed? Is there anybody else opposed? We have a motion to close public hearing, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. President?
Counsel DePiero.
I would like to make a motion to refer this to Public Utilities Committee, there's obvious, some, obviously some serious concern on both sides, this is a highly populated elderly area, I'd hate to see the tripping hazard put in with this new kind of concept, I'd like to send it to committee, and hopefully the company considers replacing the actual pole itself, thank you.
Second motion.
Counsel Matusky on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I agree with Counselman DePiero, those wires that come down, you don't see too many anymore, bracing the telephone pole, they're very dangerous for children on bikes, you don't see them at night, you can clearly see that the pole is a gentleman, the neighbor that abuts this pole, the pole was bent when they put it up, and they've overloaded the top, you know, with all due respect to the petitioner, you know, this isn't a second-class city, you can't just throw bent poles up anywhere you want, and then put a wire up and say, well, that's going to be, that's not happening, I'm not on the utility committee, but I hope that, this company is a trillion-dollar company, just for the record here, they can afford a straight pole, so, I'm not on the committee, and I hope that this brace thing is not put up, and a, a new pole put up, and stop loading these poles up with these heavy contraptions that they're putting on there, that's causing half the problem, thank you.
Counsel Marquesi on the, on the, on the motion. Okay, all right, we have a motion for, to refer this to the Public Utilities Commission, Committee, and we're second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Second motion.
We have a motion to open public participation, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, okay, clerk, identify if there's a waiting list?
I have, I have one speaker on the list, Kevin Kidd.
Mr. Kidd, please come before us, just want to reemphasize for public participation, City Councilman members are not allowed to comment or ask questions, this is for you to air your, your view on us, and if it's something that we can follow up on, a council will be assigned to, to follow up on the issue.
I think the motion has come from me, a motion made to have Mr. Kidd come before us, now?
No, not for public participation, sorry.
Public participation.
Good evening, Kevin Kidd, 31 Liberty Street, I'm here about the, the proposal for the change of direction of church and Webster Ave, I think you're going to end up landlocking the people on Liberty Street, forcing us to go onto Broadway, no matter what road we take, you're going to force more traffic down Devon Street to get to Norwood Street, I don't know why, you just can't change the roads that you have now, church is facing that way, and face Webster, the way it's going towards Broadway, it's just my opinion and my family's opinion, it's, I think it's a bad idea, you're just going to force us to go onto Broadway, no matter how we go, and you're just going to rush out, everybody knows rush hour here on Saturdays, it's just to make a, a bad problem worse, I think, and that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time so much tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up.
If there's no other speakers, I make a motion to close public.
Second motion.
Close public participation, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number four is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as President, an appointment of Verna Green to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring March 2021.
No, that's not.
Thank you, Mr. President, with your indulgence, I would just like to make a quick presentation, if that's okay with the council and yourself.
I think there'll be more public hours once you pass the item. Okay.
Favorable action on the order.
Favorable action on the order.
The motion favorable action on item number four?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Gabon.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, they have passed.
They have passed the order, congratulations. If you would please come up, I believe Counsel Matusky has a presentation for you. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council, tonight is a very special night for this young lady, she just turned 80 in February, I know she's a little on the shy side about that, can you believe she has 33 grandchildren, she could swing an election if they all lived in Everett. But this young lady has been appointed by the last three mayors, Mayor Gooch, Mayor Hanlon, and Mayor Di Maria, this is her second. And we all know that the Council on Aging is a volunteer group of seven women, there's no men on that board, but she did work part-time at the Armory for the last 16 years, and just recently retired, she was the first one in that building to make coffee for the senior citizens at the Conley Center, she was the one that picked out the color of the utensils and the tablecloths and everything else, but she is really a good person, and she's involved, you all know who she is, the mayor loves her, and this is one of his best appointments to this, this organization, so I do have a citation, I'll be very quick, Mr. President, I also'd like to introduce her son and daughter-in-law, who just got married New Year's Eve, James and Laurie Green, congratulations, and they live right here on Webster Street, but I am so happy to know this woman, you know, everybody knew my father was ill for six or seven years, and my mother had some difficulties without this woman's assistance in my family's life, on a personal level, and Leo knows this, taking care of my dog, or whatever, you know how it is when you have to be attended from places a day, this woman rose to occasion in my family, of course, I knew her husband, I've known him for 35 years, but she is a wonderful person, and I'm happy that she's going to stay on at the Council of Aging, so I'm going to read the citation, "Be it hereby known to all that the Everett City Council and his honor the mayor hereby opposite sincerest congratulations to Vernie, Verna," everybody knows that, I call her Bunny, but Vernie, Verna Bunny Green, I get used to that, Verna, "in recognition of your outstanding work on behalf of Everett senior citizens at the Conley Center, the entire city government extends its best wishes, it signed by our city clerk, Sergio Canelio, and sponsored by myself and the entire city council," well, we congratulate you.
No problem.
Mr. President, can I, Mr. President, can I make a motion?
Second.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to take, suspend the rules and take item number three off the calendar, please?
That step is dangerous, it's terrible.
You all right?
With either the high wind or the heavy wet snow, building up either on the transformer or the wires to take it down. We've been lucky for maybe the last four, five years that that hasn't happened. But it gets progressively worse on the pole each year because of the weight at the top.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you guys wanting to get the pole done. They can get a pole that's straight. I think the pole was partly bold when they put it up. It didn't happen overnight. And if you don't set up a straight structure, it's gonna naturally go in whichever direction the weight tends to, like water.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else opposed? Is there anybody else opposed? We have a motion to close public hearing. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. President?
Councilor DePiero.
I would like to make a motion to refer this to Public Utilities Committee. There's obviously some serious concern on both sides. This is a highly populated elderly area. I'd hate to see the tripping hazard put in with this new kind of concept. I'd like to send it to committee and hopefully the company considers replacing the actual pole itself. Thank you.
Second motion.
Councilman Matusky on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilman DePiero. Those wires that come down, you don't see too many anymore, bracing the telephone pole. They're very dangerous for children on bikes. You don't see them at night. You can clearly see that the pole is a gentleman, the neighbor that abuts this pole. The pole was bent when they put it up, and they've overloaded the top. You know, with all due respect to the petitioner, you know, this isn't a second-class city. You can't just throw bent poles up anywhere you want and then put a wire up and say, well, that's gonna be... That's not happening. I'm not on the utility committee, but I hope that... This company is a trillion-dollar company, just for the record here. They can afford a straight pole. So I'm not on the committee, and I hope that this brace thing is not put up and a new pole put up. And stop loading these poles up with these heavy contraptions that they're putting on there. That's causing half the problem. Thank you.
Councilman Marchesi on the motion. Okay. All right. We have a motion to refer this to the Public Utilities Committee. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Second motion.
We have a motion to open public participation. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Okay. Clerk, identify if there's a waiting list.
I have one speaker on the list, Kevin Kidd.
Mr. Kidd, please come before us. Just want to reemphasize for public participation, city councilman members are not allowed to comment or ask questions. This is for you to air your view on us, and if it's something that we can follow up on, a council will be assigned to follow up on the issue.
I think the motion has come from me. A motion made to have Mr. Kidd come before us. No?
No, not for public participation.
Public participation.
Good evening. Kevin Kidd, 31 Liberty Street. I'm here about the proposal for the change of direction of church and Webster Ave. I think you're gonna end up landlocking the people on Liberty Street, forcing us to go onto Broadway, no matter what road we take. You're gonna force more traffic down Devon Street to get to Norwood Street. I don't know why you just can't change the roads that you have now. Church is facing that way and face Webster, the way it's going towards Broadway. It's just my opinion and my fellow's opinion. I think it's a bad idea. You're just gonna force us to go onto Broadway, no matter how we go, and you're just gonna rush out. Everybody knows rush hour here on Saturdays. It's just make a bad problem worse, I think. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time so much tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up.
If there's no other speakers, I'll make a motion to close public...
Second motion.
Close public participation. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
I do have a sign-in sheet. Mr. President, could the police suspend the rule and take item number four?
Motion to take item number four. Clerk will read the item.
Item number four is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, an appointment of Verna Green to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring March 2021.
No, that's not...
Thank you, Mr. President. With your indulgence, I would just like to make a quick presentation, if that's okay with the council and yourself.
I think there'll be more probably out once you pass the item.
Okay.
Favorable action on the order.
The motion favorable action on item number four.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor? Clerk will read the rule.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchesi?
Yes.
Councilor Matusky?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Seminelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, if passed.
If you pass the order, congratulations. If you would please come up, I believe Councilor Matusky has a presentation for you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. Tonight is a very special night for this young lady. She just turned eighty in February. I know she's a little on the shy side about that. Can you believe she has thirty-three grandchildren? She could swing an election if they all lived in Everett. But this young lady has been appointed by the last three mayors, Mayor Gouci, Mayor Hanlon, and Mayor DiMaria. This is her second... And we all know that the Council on Aging is a volunteer group of seven women. There's no men on that board. But she did work part-time at the Armory for the last sixteen years and just recently retired. She was the first one in that building to make coffee for the senior citizens at the Conley Center. She was the one that picked out the color of the utensils and the tablecloths and everything else. But she is really a good person, and she's involved. You all know who she is. The mayor loves her, and this is one of his best appointments to this organization. So I do have a citation. I'll be very quick, Mr. President. I also'd like to introduce her son and daughter-in-law, who just got married New Year's Eve, James and Laurie Green. Congratulations. And they live right here on Webster Street. But I am so happy to know this woman. You know, everybody knew my father was ill for six or seven years, and my mother had some difficulties without this woman's assistance in my family's life on a personal level. And Leo knows this, taking care of my dog or whatever. You know how it is when you have to be attended from places a day. This woman rose to occasion in my family. Of course, I knew her husband. I've known him for thirty-five years. But she is a wonderful person, and I'm happy that she's gonna stay on at the Council of Aging. So I'm gonna read the citation. Be hereby known to all that the Everett City Council and His Honor the Mayor hereby opposite sincerelyest congratulations to Verna... Everybody knows that. I call her Bunny, but Verna Bunny Green. I get used to that, Verna. In recognition of your outstanding work on behalf of Everett senior citizens at the Conley Center, the entire city government extends its best wishes. It's signed by our city clerk, Sergio Canelio, and sponsored by myself and the entire city council. Well, we congratulate you.
Mr. President, can I make a motion?
Second. Good.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number three off the calendar, please?
That step is dangerous. It's terrible.
You all right? You won't be the first time. You all right? Catch your breath now.
Congratulations.
He's leaving.
All right, let's resume. Councilor DeFlorio, the next item you have for the speaker?
Item twenty-four.
Clerk will read item number twenty-four.
Oh, who's leaving?
Okay, there's actually, there's a motion for item number three. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three. There's an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president.
Sorry, I'm gonna reread that if she wasn't on the mic. Item number three is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, an appropriation to transfer $500,000 from the general stabilization fund into the school department budget per the request of the school department.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider that routine?
No, this would not be considered routine.
Maybe?
Or you can pull this one for the next meeting. We do have a communication from the mayor. Would you like it read?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is from His Honor the Mayor. While I am unable to attend this meeting of the city council, I am writing to you to respectfully request your support of a $500,000 transfer from the city's stabilization fund to the school department's budget. This transfer will allow all ongoing and upcoming extracurricular activities to proceed through the end of the current year, school year, including but not limited to the planned high school marching band trip to Washington, D.C. This funding will also allow all school employees to work until the end of the school year or ensure that the special needs of our students are met. Earlier today, I met with the school department to begin work on a new fiscal year budget, one that will not include mid-year requests to this body. Our school finance task force has been meeting regularly, and I look forward to continuing to work with the school committee, city council, and staff to meet the fiscal needs of our schools through careful, prudent planning and budgeting. Thank you very much for your consideration. Sincerely, Carlo DiMaria, Mayor, City of Everett.
Can we invite... Yeah, we can invite people to committee.
Right now, there's a motion. There's a motion to send this to committee. Can we have a second?
I think she wanted to...
Go ahead.
But we need to invite the chief financial...
On the motion.
On the motion, Chief Financial Officer to the committee, and if somebody from the school department and somebody from the mayor's office.
Okay, so we have a request for the chief financial officer, somebody from the mayor's office, someone from the school department to attend that committee meeting. Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Please suspend the rules. Take item number twenty-four.
Kill him, man.
Which one does he want?
Clerk will read item number twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne A. Matusky that a representative of Cataldo Ambulance Service appear at the next city council meeting on their policy of taking customers to Witten Hospital only in emergencies.
Do we have a representative from Cataldo?
Yes.
Motion to invite Mr. Cataldo before us?
We have a motion to invite the president from Cataldo Ambulance before us. So I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please. If you please sit down and state your name and title.
Thank you, Council President. I'm Dennis Cataldo of Cataldo Ambulance Service, joined here with Ron Coronto, our chief operating officer. Thank you for inviting us. Certainly appreciate the time.
Council Matusky is the sponsor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank you, Mr. Cataldo and...
Ron.
Ron, for being here this evening. Over the last couple of years, you know, first of all, I want to say thank you to your EMTs for all the rescues, along with our fire department, that you provide to the overdose situation that occurs daily in the city and everywhere else.
Thank you.
But I only have five minutes. We have new rules here, so I've gotta ask you these questions quickly and maybe not as professionally as I'd like. But over the last few years, I've had people tell me that when they're in the ambulance... Now, when you're in the house, you're taken out in a stretcher, for instance.
Yes.
You're just concerned about getting in the ambulance and going where you want to go, hopefully. It's been... And I know it to be true, that several people have insisted they go to Mass General where their doctor is or their paperwork is, or the Lawrence Memorial, which is in Medford, or the Melrose Wakefield, a few people on that one. And it kind of... The policy explained by the EMTs to these people, we don't go to those places. We only go to Witten Hospital. And that, to me, just seems a little awkward. That should be told... Well, if a person's sick, I mean, you're halfway down the street, and I got news for you, where I live, say you're at the casino, for instance, Mr. President, you can get to MGH quicker than you can to Witten Hospital. I just want you to know that. And where I happen to live in my neighborhood, I can get to MGH in ten minutes or less, without flashing lights. So my concern is that this doesn't seem to be a fair practice if people choose not to go... Now, I was born at the Witten Hospital, so there's no reflection on that. I just want to clear that up. And my whole family was. But what is your actual policy? Because, you know, it's concerning to me, to be honest with you.
Okay, so there's a number of factors that affect the EMT or paramedic's decision on where a patient is transported. So in general, there's a statewide treatment protocol, and there's also a point-of-entry plan based on patient condition. So when we arrive at a home, we assess a patient. It can be at a basic life support or advanced life support level. If it's at a basic life support level, we have a little bit more discretion about what hospital the patient ultimately ends up, what emergency room that they are transported to. When a paramedic is on scene and the patient's condition might be life-threatening, the decision is not quite as clear as to where we may go. Certain hospitals have different designations as to their ability to handle certain types of patients. So if it was a trauma, a level-one trauma, the Witten Hospital is not a level-one trauma center. We would have to take the patient to the Mass General Hospital, Boston Medical Center, or Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, and in which case, we would choose to go to the closest facility. As a rule of thumb, the general consensus for field staff and in the medical community is you go to the closest appropriate facility. The City of Everett is lucky enough and afforded, and believe me when I tell you, you shouldn't take it for granted, that you actually have a hospital in your community, because there are many communities that have a very diverse and strategically difficult population of individuals who need patient care and have to travel outside the confines of the city to seek that care. If you take, for example, the city of Lynn right now, who's probably gonna lose their only hospital with a population over 100,000 people, the effects are yet to be seen as to how detrimental that will be to the services that can be provided to patients in critical times. There are a number of other factors that exist, including medical control physicians. So when we go into the... You stated that we may make patient contract and we would transport or bring the patient down to the ambulance. There is a lot that happens from the time we make patient contract in the house and from when we get to the ambulance and from the ambulance is transporting to the hospital. So in most instances, when there's a paramedic in the vehicle, they contact medical control, and that's a physician on the other end of the phone that helps assess the patient's condition and then provides direction to the paramedic on where to take the patient. So on more critically ill patients, we don't actually make the decision. A physician is making the decision. We also have equipment that is far beyond the scope of what existed even five or certainly ten years ago, that allows us to do things that stabilize patients in many cases, to transport them further. Also, is more predictive that in certain instances, it's predictive to bring them to a closer facility. And regardless of what the general consensus is about a facility's, hospital's capability to handle a certain type of call, the state really dictates that if they're designated at a particular level for liability and for patient care reasons, you should go there. So if a local facility has a cath lab and you have a patient that has a cardiac condition, if that hospital's capable of handling it, whether you or I agree that they are equally capable to a Boston facility, we will transport the patient there. In particular, we did get some kind of purview of your concerns, and we did some data that I brought with me. I'll just go over it with you quickly, if you want. So, for example, for the first three months of 2018, we transported 652 patients from the City of Everett. Of that number, 62.4% went to the Witten, which is now CHA Everett, and only 23.2% went to MGH Boston. But that is a total of 85 total percent of all the patients we transported. And you recalled a couple of other names of facilities. We take patients to Melrose Wakefield Hospital. We took patients to BIDMC, Boston Medical Center, Brigham Women's, a number of other facilities. So only 85% of the patients, or I should say, 85% of the total patients, went to those two facilities, the Witten and Cambridge Chelsea line. And I would say the basis of most of that is the patient's clinical condition at the time that we transported them. And we ran, just for the sake of kind of some uniformity, we ran the numbers for both Revere and Chelsea and as a point of destination, and they have quite similar in terms of percentages of where we took patients. So there's no, you know, no auditions here in the City of Everett. And I could tell you again that the staff that we have that functions in the City of Everett has a very good relationship with all the MS agencies here, the police and the fire, as well as the emergency room staff of the hospital. And I, you know, I believe they do try and support the local community hospital whenever possible.
Okay. I've only got less than a minute left.
Oh, sorry.
We have just changed the rules here that you can't filibuster, okay? But I want to thank you for your time. You've answered most of my questions, but to me, I would like to know if, before I get into that ambulance, that we are gonna take me. I think that's a policy that you should tell the loved ones of somebody that's sick, okay? I personally, my mother, if she had to go, she'll have her paperwork's at MGH, not at Witten. Like I said, no offense to that hospital. I was born there sixty years ago. But the truth of the matter is, I think there's gotta be a policy. You shouldn't just be getting into an ambulance and saying, oh, no, no, you can't go where you want. No, 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 you're not going to Melrose Wakefield, you're going to Witten. I think that's really over the top, okay? I didn't know this existed. And as I said, you can get to Mass General just as quick as you can to Witten Hospital from certain parts of Everett, especially where the casino's gonna be. You're gonna have to have an ambulance just there for that, in that neck of the woods. But I want to thank you, Mr. Cataldo. You've been in business here for many years.
Thank you.
And, you know, I appreciate the good work that you do and the gentlemen here. But, you know, to tell you the truth, I really, you know, for me, I want to know where I'm gonna... When I go out in that stretcher, I want to know where I'm gonna go, not where the EMT wants me to go, decides to go. Because I may decide to call another ambulance company. You understand?
Oh, I see.
And I don't know if that can happen. You know, I don't know if you have competition in Everett or not on that level. But I want to thank you for being here, but I think it's a policy that needs to be changed to tell people where they're actually gonna go before they get into the ambulance. You know, and I know that there's situations that you have to go to the Witten, but I think people should have a choice. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, and if anybody does have a specific concern that arises, I'd be more than happy to investigate that on a individual basis and speak directly with the EMTs or paramedics as to what the basis of the decision was. We certainly want anybody to believe as though we're totally discretionary on our part as to where we bring patients. Again, there are a number of factors that come into play. But we appreciate the opportunity to hopefully be able to shed some light on how we decide or how it's decided where patients are transported. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a motion to excuse Councilor McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to make a brief statement. You can excuse if you'd like, but I just wanted to make a brief statement, which is the Cataldo Ambulance, if not for them being here in the City of Everett in 2015, I may not be sitting here this evening. I had a brain injury in 2015 that was life-threatening. They were able to get into Mass General Hospital from Everett in a matter of, it seemed like seconds. It was the morning commute. You couldn't believe how fast this ambulance got me into Mass General Hospital. They took me in, we did brain surgery, and if not for the Cataldo Ambulance Services that morning, I may not be sitting here this evening. They were very professional to my family. Unfortunately, I wasn't awake at that time. They were very professional to my family. They talked to my family about the process that was going to take place and kept my family in the loop. I wanted to thank you personally this evening for your service and for the service to the community, because you guys are top-notch and always providing great service to our community.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you don't know.
Second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Second.
Opposed?
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Before the clerk takes the next item, actually, what's your pleasure on this item, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Catalo and his representative to be here this evening. They actually showed up. We invited them, and we got some information. And I'm a little more clearer now. When people call me, why didn't I go where I wanted to go? Now I can answer that question correctly. As I said, they provide not... I know that they've rescued many drug overdosed people in this community and other cities, but I've seen it firsthand. So no reflection on the company, but that policy, a choice is a choice. You're paying to go somewhere, you should go where you want to go. That's what I'm trying to say. And that's what people that called me are trying to say. So with that, I'll refer this back to sponsor, and I want to thank you for the levity, Mr. President.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to refer us back to sponsor. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Suspend the rules. Take item twenty-seven.
Before we take the next item, I just want to just comment on something that Council Matusky had stated. First of all, I want to thank, you know, former city clerk Michael Madarazzo for conducting a parliamentary procedure training class with the majority of the city council last week. For those members who weren't able to make that, you're gonna be aware of some different handling of the meetings tonight. First of all, when a member is... When you're asking questions with a guest, I'm not gonna be... I'm gonna be a little more flexible on the time, but until the guest is left, you'd hold back on any comments or comments on the motion. When you comment on the motion, then the five-minute rule is gonna take place. Each member will have two opportunities to speak, but the second opportunity will only occur after all members who are willing to speak have spoken, okay? We've all been doing this for a while. Some of us, this was just was a correction. Some of us, this is old, this is just old business. But again, for the public and for the members who weren't here, I just want to make sure you're aware. I am gonna be enforcing that a little stricter than we have in the past. Councilman Marchesi.
I have a sign-in sheet, Mr. Chairman, that people signed in.
I just want to ask you a question, because I didn't make it to the parliament.
It's okay, please.
And a quick question was, when we're going to send something to a council, a committee, are we still going to ask ten questions here before we send it to committee?
No.
Are the committees asked? Because I see that happening here all the time.
One thing that will happen is, once there's a motion seconded to go to committee, at that point, we'll take the vote. All discussion will cease. If it goes to committee, then that's where you'll bring your questions. If it fails, then exploratory will continue until a motion is made. Councilman McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are you through? Okay. I just, I wanted to say, once this does go into committee, are we gonna be able to bang up that item for like two hours like we've been doing after it comes out of committee?
No.
With a full report?
It shouldn't be.
Because it's been going that way for a long period of time, and we don't need to do that any longer.
We're, we're working on changing that. There'll be two, we've approached some short-term and some long-term approaches. First of all, for the long term, this is going to, why the importance of the computer training, the laptop training will be as, over the next month or two. Our goal is to be able to conduct a paperless meeting coming out of the summer session, and all your committee reports, all your details will be readily available there. Until that point, we've had some discussion about summarizing the committee minutes and discussing those minutes as we get these, through these items, okay? The main thrust of this meeting is to direct business to the proper parties for the work to be done. And we've been very flexible on that, but this is something we've got to tighten up because these meetings, we're doing double work.
Yeah.
We're spending, we're spending time in here beating an issue to death, sending it to committee, beating it to death, taking it out of committee, beating it to death. And we need to, we need to start taking a control of it.
Well, the reports that come out of committee should be specific reports from the chair person of the committee and then actually get it out to the members.
Yes.
In timely fashion. So when that happens, there's, you know, everybody has everything that they needed to hear, and if there was any additional questions, there should be a limited amount of questioning on that. So.
Absolutely.
Other than that, we don't need committees no more. We could do it right here till 3:00 o'clock at night.
The committees are televised, Mr. Chairman.
The committees, if I could, you're absolutely, the committee meetings themselves are televised. The details, there's, there's no limit to the amount of ways you can obtain information on a committee. The days of a committee making a decision and then it coming out and a member not being aware of the committee and trying to start this thing from scratch after considerable time has already been invested in it, unless you're bringing up a new direction, it should be to decide and vote on the material in front of you.
Oh, okay.
The only thing I request is that we get invite, let us know when the committees.
Committees are always.
Everybody has to know. In other words, I may not be on a committee, and if you're going to meet on ways and means and I'm not on that committee, I want to watch it. I want to see what the questions were asked, and I want to see what's going on so that I don't bring the questions to the floor. So we all, all the counselors need to get an email or whatever saying when the committee meetings are going to meet, even if we're not on it.
Yes. The committee, right now, the committee members get the report. We'll CC the remaining members so everyone is aware of a meeting, okay?
Right.
This way, if it's an issue that is near and dear to your heart, you've got the opportunity to appear and speak on it or ask questions, okay?
Okay, suspend the rules, take item 28.
One, one, I have one.
Second.
One last. Can we take? On the president's informational point that he just made, if you want to send something to committee, that is debatable. Am I correct, Mr. President? In other words?
It's debatable on the question of sending it to committee.
That's right.
Not on passing the merit of the question.
So I just want the members to understand, you can't just say, "I want to send it to committee," and that's dead discussion.
No. Once a, once a motion is passed to send it to committee and second it, the only discussions that occur will be on the motion to send it to committee.
Right.
Once that has been addressed, at that point, you know, the next motions will.
Give your views on why not to send it to committee.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Let's, if we could, let's move forward, put this in.
Could we please get going with the meeting?
Suspend the rules, take 28, please.
Okay, too many people talking at once, please. Let's move on, let's get the, let's get the meeting back on track. Listen, motion.
Suspend the rules and take 28, please.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number.
Item number 28 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano. "To all parties interested in a public hearing for EverSource, who is proposing to construct, operate, and maintain a new 115 kilovolt substation." The public hearing was held February 12th.
Okay. Gentlemen, I appreciate your enthusiasm to come up, but we need a motion to invite you up first. So it's okay.
So moved.
We have a motion to invite, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you'd please introduce yourselves, name, occupation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight and speak. I want to introduce myself. I'm Bill Zamperelli. I'm the Community Relations Representative for EverSource. Along with me is our project manager, Dwayne Boyce, and with us is our traffic engineer, Mike Sutton from VHB. What we wanted to do is to speak to the council about our grant of location. I believe we had an opportunity to make a brief presentation the last time we were here, I think it was two weeks ago. And what we were hoping to be able to do is to move that toward a decision. What, I think what happened the last time was Mayor Di Maria asked us not to move forward until we had assigned a memorandum of understanding with EverSource. We now have such an agreement, we were able to sign that and get that fully executed today. The mayor had signed it on Thursday of this, this week. So I think we're, we're at that point where we'd be happy to make another brief presentation if you think it's helpful. Otherwise, we'd, we'd ask you to consider the grant of location that is in front of you.
If you could provide us with updated information or current information to, just to refresh us.
Okay. Do you want me to just walk through that, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
While they're, while they're maybe making the technical adjustments, maybe I can just speak to the fact that we do have a final energy facility siting board approvals for this project. They were issued on December 1st, and we are now ready to move forward with construction. We have been working collaboratively with, with Wind Casino's construction group and Al Karia, their, their project manager, to try to, try to work in similar locations where we're both going to be working. Right now, that looks like Dexter and Robbins Street, but will also be on Beecham Street and on Bush, on Broadway.
Right.
I am ready.
Okay.
So I'll kind of, yes, absolutely.
I'd like to point out that what we're doing here is wrong. Every time, and those reflection on anybody, but any time that someone comes before us and says, "Show us anything." How many panels are you going to show us? Eight, whatever it is, they're supposed to give that to us in paper. Now, I know you guys don't know that, but we haven't been doing that, and I think we should start to enforce that rule because we need a paper copy of what's right there and everyone that you're going to show after us.
Okay.
Because that has to be in front of us, not only from when you show it to us, but when you're gone also, and when we leave, when we're going to look in that and everything. So not going to do it now, but I just want to tell everybody now that I will absolutely.
We'd be happy to provide those paper copies.
Not just you guys, everybody.
Understood. Yes.
But it's not after.
I'll have them sent over in a moment.
While they're talking. Okay? Not tonight.
Nope. I'm with you. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'll fly through this and hit the high notes. I know the last time we were here, there was much more pressing matters with the school committee and teachers, and there was quite the audience, so. I was in and out quickly, it was beautiful. So with that, the overall project is to improve system reliability and address the increasing demand for electricity in this general area. This is part of 40 or so projects that have been executed or asked to go forward by ISO, who is the independent service organization that runs the electrical grid here in the Northeast. The 40 projects are in the greater Boston area to, again, improve system reliability and create the ability for increased demand for electricity, as we all see casinos and other things being built in the area. This project in particular is a 115 KV volt, kilovolt underground transmission line between two substations. It will go between, actually, three substations. This one will go between the Mystic Station out on Broadway on 99 Alfred Street and will connect to the Chelsea Substation that's existing and a new substation that will be constructed in East Boston. The line extends about 4.4 and 3/4 miles or so. 3.23 miles are from the new station in East Boston to the Mystic Station and a mile and a half from the Mystic Station to Station 488, which is the Chelsea Substation. And it will pass through Charlestown, Everett, Chelsea, and East Boston. The, we did receive, as Bill had mentioned, EFSP approval back in November of 2017. For the purposes of the city of Everett, the project itself will leave the city of Boston on Alfred Street, right at the Dexter Street intersection, will proceed along Dexter, turn onto Robin in the northerly direction, turn southeasterly, so to speak, along Beecham, all the way to the city limit over by the Purdue Center on Beecham Street. Just sort of where we're at with permitting, you know, we've got the EFSP and DPU approvals. There is no Conservation Commission exercise needed here in the city of Everett. And as Bill had mentioned, we're here before you tonight for grant of location, which will be followed by street opening permits as we start to begin construction. Safety is a top priority for EverSource and our contractors. The contractors will be working in the street. The sort of overall procedure for installation of this type of a line, they will go in first and put the manholes in. If those of you who are not familiar with underground transmission lines, these manholes or vaults, as they're called, are rather significant in size. I believe they're eight by 20 is a good round number, I would believe, and they're tall enough for a man to stand inside. So they're pretty substantial structures. But those would be excavated first, they would install those, and then they would come along and do the trench excavation to put the conduit in the ground. Then they would come back once all that stuff has been installed, obviously pull the new cables, do any splicing that needs to happen, and then final restoration of any of the roadways that need to be done in accordance with the MOU that we've executed here in the city of Everett. Prior to the vault installation and trenching, the first work you will see is survey crews out there marking, you'll see dig safe guys out there marking, all the stuff that's required, sort of pre-work for construction. And, you know, EverSource is committed to try and be a good neighbor here as far as doing construction and working with the city on construction hours and using low noise emitting equipment. Typical work zone sequence, you can see, as I mentioned, the structures of those manholes, those vaults that are up in the upper left-hand corner there, they're rather significant, they require a rather significant piece of equipment to actually pick them off of the flatbed, as you see there, and place them into the hole. Every time we install one of these manholes within the city of Everett, it's going to require temporary street closure for the roadways that we have to install them on. In this particular case, we've got one at the intersection of Dexter and Alfred Street. They, it's actually on Dexter, but just off of the Alfred Broadway Street intersection. The next one is about the midpoint of Robin Street. It's at about, I believe it's Lynn Street. Then there's another closure down on Beecham that's about halfway between Bean and Robin, and that's for the third manhole. And the last manhole that we have here in the city of Everett is on Beecham Street, just past, it's actually equidistant between the city line and Bean Street, heading out toward the Purdue Center on Beecham. Once that work is complete, as you can see in the next diagram there, or the next picture, you've got, you know, a trench excavation would, would occur, they would lay the conduits in and encase them in thermal concrete, which is sort of like a, thermal concrete is sort of like a flow fill, for those of you who are familiar with that type of material. They would backfill the trench, temporarily pave that trench, and then at the end, we'll come back and do any final roadway restoration once all the cables have been pulled and spliced and the work has been completed. Now, this happens with several different crews, and it's like, we call it our wagon train, and it's a, that's a very small diagram. I believe the next slide actually has a bigger version of it. You can see here, the very first one, the manholes are already installed, you've got guys out in front of where you're working, digging the trench, the next crew behind them is laying the conduit, the next crew behind them is placing the thermal concrete, and then you're backfilling and paving behind that. And so there is a couple hundred feet of trench that will be open at any given time. These trenches are only going to be open during approved work hours, which are during non-commuting hours here in the city of Everett. And they, all these excavations will be plated during commuting periods, so all the roadways will be passable. Traffic management plans should be part of your packet. It was submitted as part of the grant of location package, so you guys can peruse that. But in addition to that, EverSource will be doing door-to-door outreach, door hangings, informational mailings for the butters, and similar to what we've done here for the grant of location notifications for the hearing. There is also a public-facing website that EverSource will be hosting for this project that also lists the project hotline and an email for communication.
Mike, if I could just interrupt you for one second?
Absolutely.
We also did have an open house in Everett, at the Conley Center, back on February 27th for the folks who are interested. We sent out mailers, so folks were welcome to come in and, you know, ask questions. We had a whole host of members there for any questions they might have, but the outreach is going to be continuous throughout the project.
The only thing I would add is we actually did door drops to make sure that we did reach all of the tenants. We understand that some of the property owners don't always share information, so we want to make sure tenants are aware of what we're doing also. So that, that will be a practice that we will continue to do.
So again, to extend on what Bill was just saying about the door hangers and things like that, the, EverSource will hold a pre-construction briefing with local officials, again, part of our permitting process and part of the street opening process with the city, to make sure that we're, we're doing everything that the city requires, everybody's kept in the loop, obviously, public safety officials being the most important.
And maybe I should also add that we have been working with the Chamber of Commerce, the Island End Group, to, to keep them impressed of what we're doing. And we've been working specifically to try to figure out when the best time to do construction in their area so that we have the least impact on them. It's proved to be a very effective and positive way to communicate with them.
And to extend on what Bill just mentioned, part and parcel with that has been the Wind Group and their contractors have been attending those meetings as well, and we are continuing to coordinate with that project and their contractors, so that way we can try and integrate this project into their work as well, as best we can. As part of this, anyone who's signed up for email updates as part of the project website or has attended any of our meetings and given us their information, will be sent emails, regularly updating them on the, on the project. We've also, I believe we're going to also share that information through the Wind folks as well. They send out regular updates, even, you know, when there's issues on the street now, they send out updates sometimes a couple times a day, and we'll be sort of linking with their system and working with them as well. Bill had mentioned door-to-door, but we also have direct mail, again, making sure the door-to-door, making sure that the people that live there actually know and not just the landlords that own these properties. And that will all be done throughout construction, especially, most importantly, two weeks prior to the start of any construction in any area out there. Business outreach, as Bill had mentioned, we're, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce, but again, working with individual businesses on an as-needed basis to address their needs. We did have a couple of folks come in on the Chelsea meeting that we're working with to try and work around their particular needs. It was great to hear from them. And then website updates and, you know, weekly to bi-weekly updates on the website for where we're going, construction-wise, sort of a weekly what we're doing and then bi-weekly where we think we're going, you know, based on construction progress. This is just to give you an idea what the, I won't spend a lot of time on it, this is a Jason project that's up, Mystic to Woburn. This is what their project up, project website looks like. You can click on your particular town and we'll give you updates for whatever work is planned or coming up in that area. I thank you for your time.
Councilman Del Sol.
Question, I know it's tough to say, how long will this project be in the Everett area alone?
So we're, we're anticipating starting this spring, I would say, rough timeline, six to nine months or so. You know, that's, that's really a function of existing conditions, you know, what we find when we excavate, that'll kind of dictate the, the progress, but, you know, our goal is to kind of work with as many crews as we possibly can without, you know, being a hindrance to, to the city and, and just working through it with the, with the officials and making sure that we get through this as quickly as possible.
Working after hours, after traffic hours?
Yes. The, all the stipulations from the DPU order were mainly nighttime work. There are a couple of sections on Robin where I think there were some residential that we are limited to daytime hours, but other than that, it's predominantly night work within the city of Everett.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hamlin.
Thanks, Jim. Just from beginning to end, we have maybe six or seven different phases that are listed each other, and I would like to know the length of time that. to each other, and I would like to know the length of time that we're going to go. And I know that we're not going to do everything all at once, you have to do something and keep going, and then start the second phase of it and keep on going, then the next phase. I just want to know, how long is it going to be? Three months, or it going to be three weeks, or what is it going to be?
So overall, like I said, it was, it's around roughly, if I had to get, around six to, six to nine months or so. Our goal is to be completed with the work, the real intrusive work from a, you know, excavation standpoint, because that's really the most disruptive. That's the work that we're looking to do. Once we get to that point, then there's all, there's work which needs to be done in the way of pulling cable, splicing, but that's less intrusive, because it's only limited to the manhole locations.
No, no, that, I understand, and that's good. And, but I need to know, like, if you're going to be starting to excavate.
Sure.
All right? And you're not going to do the whole thing at once, but you're going to do a certain amount of it, and then you're going to do a next amount of it, and then you might start the excavation somewhere, but when will a spot be finished? You can't be doing the whole thing for six months. So somewhere it's got to stop, and you got to remove the traffic along and so forth, so. I know it can't be that long, so it has to be much shorter.
I think one of the things that might be helpful is, if you look at the diagram on the, on the board, this is really a construction train, and this works its way down the street, and so it would be, what would you guess, forty to?
I was going to say about three weeks. In front of any given residences, about three, about three weeks in total, but it's not three continuous weeks. Like, you'd see work for about a week, they go away for a little while, they'll come back for about a week, things like that. Yeah, because as, as Bill was trying to point out, you know, obviously, the people with the most impact will be the people, actually, Robin and Dexter are the two areas where we have manholes and residential area. They'll be the most impacted, because the manhole work will have to take place, then we'll go away, and then they'll come back and start that train.
So somewhere along the line, it's going to be free to move, and then it stops again, and then free to move, and.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
And we should also point out that, you know, at any time, if a butler needs to get access to their property and we have the trench open, we have the ability to plate that area and then provide emergency access, so if they, you know, something occurred that they needed to get a vehicle in or out of their property, that we can address that immediately.
Good. I mean, there are people that live there and work there. Thank you, thank you.
Sure, and there's been other companies, Sprague, for example, reached out to us. We sat down, met with them to understand the impacts, and, you know, they can plan accordingly, whether they need to use a different entrance and stuff like that. So we've been actively working with the butters to make sure that stuff like that happens.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to our guests. So we mentioned impact, what's the impact's going to be to the residents down in that area? It's a pretty good question, right? There you go.
It is a good question.
Well, I guess, I guess I can speak to that.
All right.
The, like I said, it'll be about a three-week total duration, as far as impact goes, but the first impact, obviously, is going to be excavation in the street. So you'll have some dust, you're going to have dirt.
Will there be any power out?
No.
No.
Nope, this is a totally new system, this is transmission-only, will not affect distribution.
All right.
So it doesn't affect their power, won't affect any of their other utilities.
So it's mostly construction?
It's just general construction.
It's your typical construction, traffic?
Trucks, yeah, trucks, cones, arrow boards, things like that.
What is the operational hours of this, to be exact?
We've yet to really firm that up with the city, we're working with them on that, but a lot of this, I believe, is slated for nighttime hours, just because of the general traffic down there and the number of trucks.
So the majority of the, from the DPU order, and this is with input from the cities, it's 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM for the bulk of it, on Robin and Lynn, where there's that residential kind of section for, I think it's about two blocks or so, that's daytime, but predominantly nighttime work.
All right, and then, so basically, I mean, I wouldn't want people digging outside of my house till 3:00 o'clock at night, you know what I mean, so. There's a, right, only one meeting in the chamber of space? But, again, we already handled that, so it'll be predominantly at night, during the day, residential. And then, how many detail, cop detail we have there, per site?
I think it depends on the setup, and what the city will require, but at most setups would be a minimum of two. The daytime work is slated to be alternating traffics, we'll actually maintain traffic, but the officers will have to allow traffic to work both directions via a single lane through the residential area, except for the one residential area that's going to require a detour will be the short end, the very end, I should say, of Robin or Beach, Beecham. That needs to close, because the conduit sweeps out and turns on the Beecham, and just because of the angle and everything, they have to close the whole road to be able to trench it.
Sure.
So, but that'll be a short duration hit as well.
But we will work with chief. How long, about?
Probably a week, because they got to kind of piece it together, I would say at most, but, because we're not working through a lot of utilities there, so I think we're actually pretty good. But that particular location, again, would be open for commuting periods and weekends, things like that. It would be plated at the end of the day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will be working with the, with Chief Mazzi and the Everett Police to ensure that they have adequate details.
Seeing as there's no more questions?
Excuse, I guess.
No, don't excuse them, I'm sorry, because they have another item 25, might as well keep them there, if it's okay. So the correct motion would be favorable action on item number 28.
Okay, we have, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, favorable action, item number 28, all in favor?
Aye.
It's going to need an order, it's going to need a roll call.
It's an order. Of course, it's not on the agenda that way, but it is an order.
Yeah, just.
Clerk will read the roll.
It is an order. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nayses, Mr. President.
You passed item number 28.
If we could please suspend the rules and take item number 25.
Second.
Clerk will read item number 25. Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I will speak on this.
I need to, I need to read the order first.
One, one second.
Let us read it first.
One voice.
Mr. President, this is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Amatusky, that a representative from EverSource Company appear March 12th, to the March 12th meeting, to invite, invite be sent certified mail, and a copy be placed in the sponsor's mailbox relative to the construction of a 20-foot foot, 25-foot wall with murals along the length of Broadway.
Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this would not appear on the calendar if EverSource reached out to us and told us about this great project of a 25-foot-high wall at the entrance and exit to our community. I only knew about it due to one of the articles in one of the papers in our city. You know, we just granted you people a work permit, this council.
Right.
So there has to be a little respect here. Now, do you think, you'd want to know, if you lived in a city, this is a question, Mr. President, and you're putting a 25-foot wall up with a mural, we don't know what's on the mural, I'm sure it's going to be nice, because the WIN people are right across the street, keeping an eye on you, and the beautiful property that the city of Boston has, the property that you have has been blighted for the last 10 years, you understand. I know that you put one of our farmer mayor's favorite trees there, but there haven't been anything else done there in years. Landscaping is not happening. Can you explain why you haven't reached out to this council?
Well, let me try to explain this. We have had one meeting on this issue. I've been involved with a meeting with, with the city planner, Tony Souza, and Jim Soper is the building commissioner, as well as the outside council, I believe it was Jonathan Silverstein, the administration's outside council, attended. And this was a meeting probably, you know, three months ago. I have not been personally involved in anything other than that, and we've, we've, we have promised to come back to them and, and visit this whole issue. That meeting hasn't happened yet. I was hoping to, hoping to set that up in the next week or so. We've, we've had a lot of interruptions, if you would, with all of the, the storm response plans that we've been involved with in the last, well, since the beginning of March, but, you know, one of, this is something that's on our agenda, we want to get in front of Jim Sopers and the city, and the city planner also, but we haven't had a time, been able to put that together. Now, I don't know all of the details of what has been proposed or what is being built. I do know that we are required to build a new fence line around the station. This is a security issue that, that is at the highest level, if you will. It doesn't provide a lot of, kind of ladder, latitude in terms of what we want, or how we would want to do it. There are certain requirements to, that we have to meet. So, again, I, I do not have that information tonight, but I'd be happy to come back and give you a full explanation of this.
Thank you.
But to my knowledge, it is not a 25-foot wall. I, I've heard it described as a fence line, and it will have cameras on it, and it will have security. It's intended to increase security around the facilities.
Excuse me, sir.
Sure.
I have five minutes now, you just chewed up three and a half of them.
Right, if, if I could, from the chair, Counselor, just remember, they're our guests, let's, let's treat our guests respectfully.
Oh, I understand that, but I thought that we have some kind of presentation. You were invited here on certified mail, sir. We just approved the license for you on item number 28. You think we just, as city fathers, this is our community.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Boyce? We live here, we represent the people. You just did a display up here in the board for 20, 25 minutes, and this has been on the, you knew about this here.
I found out about this.
Now, wait a second, I'm speaking, sir.
Okay.
Now, I'm trying to be respectful here, but it seems to me that EverSource has not reached out to the city council. I want to know about this wall, or fence, if it's, I'm going to lay this over, Mr. President. I have no further questions, but, you know, getting in touch with the mayor is one thing, but we represent the city too. You know, we all represent the community. This was, you know, are you pushing the fence in two lanes, is that what's going to happen there?
I don't know all the details, that's the problem.
Well, it looks as, Mr. President, it looks as if we may have to lay this on the table, they didn't come prepared with any information. I'm not sure if we should send this city utility committee.
I would send it to the government service operations committee.
Public safety.
Public safety. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of enclosing that, that ugly electrical equipment that's there, okay? But, you know, your company, now, Exelon called me, they're, they're in back of you, am I correct?
That's correct.
And they've extended, I just want to mention this, Mr. President, they've extended, Mr. Rogers, the communications director for Exelon, actually took the time to call me through our city clerks' conversations, and he wants the city council to come down there and take a tour of the facility, to see what chimneys are working, and so forth. So that's in the making, but EverSource really hasn't reached out to, to me, anyway. The issue is what type of wall it is, and not that we're opposed to it, but we just want to know what's going on.
Sure, I fully understand.
Okay, so what committee is that, the utility committee, or the?
Public safety.
Public safety?
Public safety.
Second the motion.
All right. I have no further questions, because evidently, they don't have very much information tonight, but I do appreciate you appearing.
Right.
You know, you can understand the frustration, we just spent a half an hour on your petition in committee and so forth, but you've got to understand, we represent the, you know, there's other offices in this building?
Yes.
But we're all here to represent the city.
Sure, and we recognize that.
So I have no further questions, but I do want to thank them.
Could we please clarify what the motion is? Thank you very much.
Okay, one second, okay. I'm controlling the meeting here, everybody's making motions and pushing people out. Wait until I make, until I make the ruling, please, okay? Granted, I won't be doing this three months, but, you know, again, this is still new. I'd ask you not to take advantage of that, okay? I have two speakers that have not spoken on this. I have a motion with no second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion right now to send it to public safety committee.
But if, but if it's not, there's no information on it, if they don't have information on it, why send it to, send it there? We have to wait till we hear from the organization?
The idea is for them to come and give us the information at the committee meeting. Would that be possible?
I'd be happy to do so.
So right now, I have a motion on the floor to send this to public safety, it's been seconded.
Second.
On the, on the, on the motion, Counselor Hamlin.
Mr. Chairman, I tried to get your word for a long time. You don't ever call me, I don't know why, and I had to stand that from now on, I'm going to lift my tongue, because you never, you never reach me. I'm going to say, second to this item, but not for these people to come, the people that know what's going on with this, they're the ones that are showing the beat, nothing. Thank all these people for coming, but they're not the person that's supposed to be the sunny. So whoever that is, that we have where they are, they're the ones that we want to be here, but that would be able to answer the tendons that we're going to be, the ends that we want, not anyone else. So that's what I'm making a second for, we have to second this, for business and all that.
Counselor Capone on the motion.
And, and to go along with that, if there are individuals within the city who have been talking about this project, they should also be coming to that meeting, so that they be able to provide a little insight from the interior.
Who would you like to invite?
I believe, I believe the names were, Mr. Soper, and did he say Tony Souza?
Yes.
So I would say those two would be the ones that we'd probably want to take in.
And you'll be able to attend?
Absolutely, and I will, I'll try to get the right people here who have the information. I apologize for this evening, it was on relatively short notice for me. I've been on storm duty, that's why I'm dressed the way I am today, and this has been kind of our drill for the last 12 days or something, just saying. And we start tomorrow also.
I can relate, I work in a field where I'll be dealing with storm issues on Wednesday as well.
But I will, I'll be assured to have the right people at the, at the next meeting, and, you know, I'll be in touch with the city clerk to verify the time.
And just so you know, he did come to my office on Thursday to discuss, he wasn't going to have too much information for us.
Right.
He was working on that, and going to keep me abreast of the situation, along with the planning department. So he did make an effort when he was in the building.
Excuse the customary, thanks.
Second the motion. Okay, we have a motion to, thanks, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On the motion, we have a motion to send this to public safety, and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can you suspend the rules and take item number 18, 19, and 27 collectively?
Thank the board and all the areas.
And then have Mr. Monty before us.
Secondary motion.
Okay, we have items number 18, 19, and 20.
27.
27, sorry. They've been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Item number 18, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to request the mayor and planning department to conduct a traffic study to see what the impact of streets along the new bus lane are experiencing, due to concerns and complaints of neighbors, neighboring streets along the bus lane. Item number 19, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to request planning and development to review the traffic flow of the light located at Broadway and Hozma Streets from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the request of neighbors. And item number 27, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselors Michael McLaughlin and Michael Marchese, to request Jay Monte of Planning and Development appear at the March 12th city council meeting to discuss the traffic patterns at the intersection of Beecham and Broadway.
Mr. President? Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to ask the clerk if there was anything, was, were these sent to traffic at all?
at all? Is there any report back from them?
Nope, because they were requested to go to the Planning Department, and that's what Jay Monte's there for.
Okay, so he's going to answer the question.
I sent it to him and Tony Souza, and they were going to work on it, because that was per our discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do I have a motion to invite Mr. Monty? I already, I actually, Mr. President, I added it with the collective group. Thank you. And with a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Jay Monte, Planning and Development.
Councilman McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Monte. On the request here that we have for number 18, can you explain what's happening with the bus lane?
So, as you know, the bus lane was a pilot project for several months. The mayor decided to then make it permanent as of last fall. But we are actually engaging with a consulting firm to further study the operation of the bus lane, so the effects that you spoke to on parking and, and operation generally, and also some of the general mobility patterns that are occurring as a result. So we are engaged with them, we'll be working with them for about the next six months or so, and we'll have sort of a longer range set of plans to work with from, from there.
So this will be a six-month project?
Give or take, yeah.
And it will go in-depth? Will it go off both sides of the streets that it's affecting?
Well, right, so it's going to be more than just looking at the existing bus lanes, actually looking at other high-demand corridors in the city where we have a lot of folks using transit, where there's a demand either from new development, or from just existing demand, where we may want to make additional transit improvements. So it'll encompass all of these things together, but the issues you brought up will be included as part of that.
Now, those, the issues are, is, I've, I've had a meeting with residents that live directly behind the Broadway area, and on Walnut Street, and other streets adjacent to the bus lane, and they're saying that they're having all this traffic come down their way now because of the bus lane, and they're parking down there now, it's creating a problem, so.
Right. So I think that's, parking is one of the big issues we'll be talking about in this study, so we will certainly reach out to yourself and those residents as we, as we conduct the study to better understand what is happening and how we're going to address it.
All right, so we'll get a report at some point, or should we put this into a committee where you're going to need six months?
No, I mean, we'll, yeah, we'll have a report out, I would, I would guess, in about six months, and this, again, this will be one of the issues that we'll address in the, in the report.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Marchese.
Yes, Mr. Monte, quick question. Has the city studied anything about trying to get some kind of parking lot in that area? Some property where they could possibly, you know, people could probably park, and get on the bus, you know, where the bus lane starts, I believe, was on the top of the hill?
Yeah, it starts back.
To the memory Ave?
Remember Ave, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's, again, something we're going to look at, because we do realize that we're creating a demand, right? We're, as much as we're taking cars off the road, we're actually potentially bringing cars to park and.
Exactly.
People street on the bus, so we, we fully understand that concern, and we are looking to address it.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through to our guest. Mr. Monte, there's two things that, that I'd like to talk about with regards to the bus lane. One of them I know the administration's trying to address, which is, you've got the access for the bus lane, and you gain, but then when you get to the circle.
Right.
Because it doesn't continue.
Exactly.
You lose everything you gain.
Right.
And you have a big bottleneck at, at the end. So I know that's something that's going to continue to be addressed.
Sure.
The, the other thing that I'd like to address is, I believe, the operating times are four to nine. And from my own personal opinion, I live on Broadway, I see it, I think that that timeframe is larger than it needs to be. I would say that traffic starts to pick up where a bus route would be beneficial around 6:00, 6:30. So I would be recommending that when you're looking at it, you're studying it, maybe we could restrict the hours a little bit, tighten it up a little bit.
Sure.
Maybe six to nine.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you, the reason we originally did it from four to nine was because when we were dropping cones out there as a pilot, you, you wanted to do that at the start of service, it was going to be too hard to get that at, you know, 5:00, 6:00 a.m.
Yeah, that lead time.
Right. But you're right, I mean, we can look at that some more and say, you know, you're right, from 6:00 to 7:00, maybe it's not necessary, and because the paint's down now, we don't need to have it at that time, but we'll certainly explore that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. No other questions?
Councilor DePiero.
Just wanted to make a quick comment, Mr. President. I understand there's plenty of small details to work out with this as parking in the timeframe, but I want to.
Do you have a question?
I want to thank Mr. Monte, because not only has it become a state model, it's actually become a national model, this bus-only lane. I saw an article for a city, I think in the Tampa area of Florida, looking at this type of view, so, good thinking, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's no more questions?
Excuse the customary thanks.
Save for the next piece. Councilman McKinnon.
I'd like to hold this over to, for a three-month period, and then have a report back from them, if we could do that. How long?
One of the things that came out of our class is that we cannot hold items that long. So what I would recommend is to turn it back.
I'll put it back on.
And then put it back on.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
We'll get a written response when they're ready.
I'd like a written response, within a three-month period, but I will reintroduce again.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Clerk will take the next item.
I've heard it.
Okay. Councilman McKinnon.
Do you have any information on this, Mr. Monte?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
On number 19? It is a request planning and development to review the traffic flow of light located on Broadway, Hozma Street area.
So we installed all new equipment in the controller boxes a few months ago, all on Broadway, upgrading the pedestrian signals and upgrading some of the timings. We are still finalizing some of those timings, and I actually appreciate you bringing up that complaint, because we will go back now and do a final walkthrough and adjust the timings there.
Okay, so, we could look for a resolution on this within, what?
Couple of weeks, I think.
All right, by next meeting, the 26th law?
I think so, yeah.
All right. Can I lay it over?
And just so I understand the complaint, it was, enough time from the side street onto Broadway?
Yes, it, it's, basically, it's, they're looking for that light to change, because it's causing a direct impact on the, the Hozma Street.
Okay, yeah, we can take a look at that pretty quick.
Okay. I'd like to lay this over for the next meeting with a response back from Mr. Monte.
Second motion.
Two corrections, yeah. Mr. President, me too.
Okay.
One moment.
There's way too many microphones on.
I should probably have mine on since I'm speaking.
You should only have been the one person.
I don't know.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Shut yours off now.
Okay. On the motion.
Thank you, Mama Rora.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, I heard Mr. Monte say something about the timing on the lights, and I want to ask a question on that, but I want to make sure I pertain to the subject. So we, you said something about the timing on the lights, is there any way that we, some, on some areas, you have to give more time for people to cross the street, unless you're near Ever Square.
Right, right.
We have some seniors that are really, you know, can't give them two minutes.
Right, so one of the things we did, sure. One of the things we did near Ever Square is we now have concurrent crossings, so whereas before, all the lights would turn red, and folks would then be able to cross the intersection from all sides, we're transitioning, we've gone to what's called concurrents. So when Broadway has got a green, you can cross Norwood Street, and you can cross Chelsea Street, and, and same with the other streets as well.
Okay.
So, we, we are, again, still working through some of the exact timings, and, but this, this was done to, you know, make it safer to, to reduce jaywalking, you know, folks who used to not want to wait for the crosswalk, who would cross, but we are, we are kind of.
I didn't want to go off subject, because I know over here says Hozma Street, has nothing to do with Ever Square, but I just thought while you were working at it.
Absolutely.
You can look at all of them. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did.
Okay, on the motion, you have a motion to hold it for how long?
Till our next meeting.
Okay.
And then have a report back.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, any other questions on it? We have a motion to, to the next meeting with a response back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, let's move on to item number 27.
To request Jay Monte of Planning and Development appear at the March 12 City Council meeting to discuss the traffic patterns at the intersection of Beecham and Broadway.
Councilor Marchese.
Thank you very much. Mr. Monte, as we discussed in back, we were talking about trying to make two lanes dedicated going into the city of, going to the city of Boston, along Broadway, between 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. And your response, if you look at here, that the city, for the next six months.
Yep.
Will have a dedicated left lane that'll take you to Beecham Street, and the two lanes to the right will be continuous flowing into Boston, the, and the third lane. So we had that discussed, discussion with Mr. Montley, Monte, and I'm, you know, just to let people know that, you know, the council's not asleep at the wheel, and Mr. Monte's helping out to get the traffic going, and that's, that's all I want to say. I don't, if anybody, that's it? If no one has anything?
Excuse me, it's coming right back. No other questions?
Aye.
What do you want on the piece?
Thank you.
Councilman, your, your, your pleasure?
That thing, I just refer it back to me, and if something doesn't happen, transpire in a couple of months, I'll, I'll bring it back out again.
Second the motion?
Motion, refer back to sponsor.
Okay, motion to refer it back to sponsor, second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I would ask the members, when you're taking items collectively, if we can be a little more discreet with that, only because a situation like this arrived, where we read three items, and then the, the speaker has to be told again, second time around, what it is that we're talking about. If you have an item that requires the same speaker, bring him up for the first piece. When we dismiss the first piece, then we'll pick up the second piece, so each item is handled separately, but in consec, consecutive order with the, with the guest. Okay? Okay, are there any more?
Mr. President? If, if I may, too, one, one thing that is always coming up over and over and over again, people at home can't hear us. So unfortunately, we turn our head to speak to a guest, we pull away from the microphone, so we have to do a better job of making sure that only the person speaking has their microphone on, and then when they are speaking, as best as possible, speak into the microphone so that people at home can hear us. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else on the sign-in sheet, clerk will reserve back to the regular order of business.
Item number two is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President to accept a rebate check of $5,321.96 from Home Depot Credit Services and deposit it into the Building Rental Revolving Fund.
Favorable action? Second the motion. Councilor Capone. One, before, we have a motion for favorable action on the motion.
I have a second.
Councilor Capone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. It looks like this must have been a rebate of some sort from a purchaser or whatnot. I'm going to recommend that we don't send it into the Rental Revolving Fund, for the same reasons I, I opposed the establishment of that fund in the first place. I think it takes a little bit of oversight away from the council, and I, I think that accountability is kind of lost. So I'm going to recommend that we send that money to the General Fund, and if that's defeated, I'll just be voting no on it.
I, I would also need a motion, sorry, for, to spend rule 13 if you're going to vote favorable action, just so we know.
Motion made, so is rule 13. Well, I have a, a motion to rule, excuse me.
That's a motion for favorable action.
Well, we still need, still need to suspend.
Take precedence.
I'm at 13.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I have a motion.
The last people that are, if you're asking for favor, never have to vote.
Councilor, that, that's incorrect, okay? And, and again, I understand what you're saying, but I have said that, okay? And right now, we have a motion for favorable action, which we have not taken a vote on. So when I, when we take the vote, no, we haven't taken the vote yet, when we take the vote, then I'll ask who's opposed. And this is an order, so there isn't any oppose of, of, in favor or against, it's a roll call. So if the clerk would read the roll call, we have, we have a motion for favorable action.
Actually, the motion to refer to the General Fund, I, I don't know if I can actually do that.
Well, and made amendment.
Yeah, you, you made an amendment, but it was, it was voted, favorable action was made, and seconded as-is, then you made an amendment. But.
Right.
Did any, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know if there was a second on the amendment.
Yeah, so as of now, I only have it as-is, and I was, I was going to do that, and then if it.
Okay.
And then if it fails, then you have your motion.
Okay.
Does that sound good, Councilor? Okay.
Counselor. Say it again.
Right now, the motion is for favorable action, there was a motion for an amendment, which was not seconded. So the motion is for favorable action.
As-is.
As-is.
And this $5,000, did it come from rentals being rebated back to the city?
I can't answer that, but maybe someone else can.
Is there anybody from?
You have the CFO here.
We do? Oh, okay, if we could please have the CFO before us?
Okay, we have a request for the CFO to come before us, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Good evening, Eric Gamas, CFO.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gamas, if you could please explain where the money came from? I'm assuming there was a purchase, maybe there was some sort of a refund off of a rental agreement, but if you could, if you could address it, I'd appreciate it.
Just explain where it came from.
Sure. The money is actually a rebate, a grant program through Home Depot as part of the state bid contract. The more the city purchases, the more the city is rewarded back. So the money that you're receiving is the first rebate check of, of any substance that the city has received. It's not broken out between which particular fund paid for, whether it was facilities maintenance, items made out of building revolving, or the water department, it's simply all of the purchases made by the city of Everett underneath our agreement with Home Depot. Traditionally, a number of communities have handled these types of transactions very differently, and certainly with, not, not really with any consistency. For example, one thing that communities have done is they've taken it in as revenue. Other communities have actually taken it and credited it back to the expense to reflect what the actual cost was. Given that the city is the size that it is, I have numerous departments that purchase through Home Depot, the school department, water sewer, so it made the most sense that if we were going to be taking this in, let's do it transparently, putting all rebates before council, letting City Council know what all of that activity is. is. And if you wanted to deposit in the General Fund, you certainly couldn't, but it made sense at the time that, given that a lot of our purchases now are coming out of the Building Revolving Fund, I do think a lot of the work that Facilities has done that generated this rebate did come out of the project that was done at the old high school related to this lease agreement. But I just, I want to be clear, it's not 100% related to that activity.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification, and again, we've had the discussion from across the way. From your point of view, I understand the revolving fund. From my point of view, the idea of revolving fund creates additional funding to a department, and I think we do lose a little bit of oversight on that from a city council perspective. So, that's why, that's my only concern with it. So, I do appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to.
Excuse our guests.
Excuse our guests. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, on the motion to favorable action, clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
No.
Counselor Delasola?
No.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
No.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be seven ayes, three nays. Mr. President, you have passed.
Clerk will read item number five.
Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to accept the donation of $200 from Broadway Donuts to be deposited into the City of Everett's Human Services Donation Account.
Favorable action for the letter. Thanks. Have a motion for favorable action. Second it?
Second. Let it be sent.
Let it be sent.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk will read item number six.
Is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president for a psychic fortune teller license renewal from Psychic Boutique of Everett at 1936 Riviera Beach Parkway. All papers are in order.
Favorable action.
The motion for favorable action, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, roll.
Nope. I need a roll.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
No.
Was that a no, Mr. Counselor?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be nine ayes, one nay, Mr. President.
You've passed item number six. Clerk will read item number seven.
Item number seven. Is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president for a second-class motor dealer license renewal for Main Street Cars Sales at 146 Main Street.
Papers in order?
All papers are in order.
Favorable action.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for favorable action. Second it? Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero. Counselor?
Why didn't you call my name?
Counselor Hanlon?
No, I mean, yes. Yes.
Sorry, Counselor.
Not a good night today.
You want to give me a ride home, John? Let's go.
You've passed item number seven. Clerk will read item number eight.
Item number eight. Is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president for a petition for a livery license from Rodford, Inc. at 7A Buckingham Street.
This is a new license?
Yes. Can I explain it real quick?
Please, sure.
If you mind. I don't know what to do with this yet. These are brand-new licenses that you just created last year under the, under Counselor, excuse me, Clerk Madarazzo. So, a lot of the licenses that are going to be coming in for livery are going to be attached mostly out of houses. You know, they have one car. It's not the big companies. So, going forward, this might be something where you want just me to authorize the license instead of coming back before here, because there'll be probably about 100 of them a year. Once the, once the business certificates expire, we're going to go to this livery license. So, it'll be a little different. If they're large companies, I would say that they're gonna come before you. It's something that we're going to be working out in, in the Licensing Committee through License, Chapter 12. But because this is a new one, and your rules say usually you send it to a committee and discuss it, it might be best that you do that. I just wanted to explain the situation with this new, this is the first time we've ever had this.
No, we have a transportation company in the city that, the cab, that they have livery also.
They're, they're under a taxi.
Under a taxi.
And they also don't, they don't, it's a, they're not in the city of Everett.
I think it should be defined in some kind of new regulations for livery, not given one else every, there'll be 5,000 in the city.
No, we had, actually, when we redid the taxi ordinance, we also, we also worked on livery. We're finding that the work we did is not sufficient to the task. So, that's what the clerk is suggesting, is that we revisit it and revise.
I wanted to give you a heads up on it. That's all. I just wanted to explain what's going to be coming before you indefinitely until we fix that.
What was your, what would you like?
My recommendation was still to send it to committee, because it is still a new licensing, and you want to discuss it. I just wanted to give you a heads up first.
Okay, Counselor DePiero.
My questions were answered before I asked them. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Just add a quick statement. I thought that if you were going to go for a livery license, you had to house that, not at your house, and you had to go off property, off-site.
It's a livery license, it did not define.
That's why it needs to go back into committee.
But, just very briefly, I don't want to go off topic, because, but you still need to license them. I can't give them just a business certificate, because that doesn't give them a license. They need letters, which I do not give through the clerk's office anymore, that allow them to operate at the airport. So, we don't give those letters. They don't really accept them. So, we're trying to regulate it in a better manner. Now, their cars are regulated, they're going to go before a process, and you're going to see if they're insured. Before, we didn't do that. We give them a business certificate, and they're gone. And you don't know how they're operating, and they have no license in their windows. So, this is, this is a better system. I just need to clarify it a little bit, that's all.
The work we did last year, we thought, covered all the bases. We're finding now, in reality, in actual implementation, it's not. There are holes, and that's what we, that's why we need to work it. In the meantime, though, we can't really hold this license up while we're working.
So, we can work on it.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Marchese?
No, just second on the motion.
Send it to license.
Counselor Capone?
CBD.
Yep, Community Business Development. Okay, so we have a motion to send this to Business Community Development, and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read number, item number nine.
Nine, yes. This is a petition offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president for a new second-class motor dealer license from Jamima Malloy, DBA Eastern Auto Sales, Aberver Beach Parkway.
Refer to Community Business Development?
This is a renowal?
It is not. They were just before us, under a different owner. The property owner is now relinquishing the license to the, to a new tenant, so.
I have a motion to send this to Business Development. Do I have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 10.
Item number 10. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Stephen Simonelli and Michael McGlaughlin that Mr. Kevin O'Donnell appears at the next Public Safety, Public Safety Service Committee meeting with an update on ax drawing bar that is being proposed at Norman Street. This is a committee report.
We have a committee report?
It was a committee report.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Yes. Yep. Committee of, on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service met on March 5, The clerk informed the committee of a communication he received from Brian McCarthy of the Liquor Licensing Commission, informing, informed him that he believes the formal license application for this business will be on their agenda for the March 12th meeting, excuse me, the March meeting. He stated that they appear at the February meeting to show the plans, et cetera, and they have been working with the police and fire to address any and all safety concerns. The Licensing Commission requested any and all concerns addressed at the meeting. He explained that the members of the commission cannot comment on any business that is subject to appear before the commission. He noted that in general, even after an approval, a liquor license takes four to six weeks to be approved by the ABCC. The committee requested that the Licensing Commission invite them to that meeting, so they could learn more about the business and express their concerns. Counselor Simonelli stated that he wanted to be recorded in opposition to this type of business being allowed in the city. The committee voted to report back to the city council with a recommendation to refer the Licensing Commission with a request that the entire city council be invited to their meeting when the application for Revolution Ax Drawing is on the commission agenda.
Second a motion. Motion to accept the committee report, and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to Licensing Commission with the request that this body be invited to that meeting, that such item will appear on the agenda.
Second a motion. I have a motion to send this to the committee, to, this committee to invite this, the body to the, attend that meeting. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 11.
Item number 11. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Peter Napolitano as president that a representative from the mayor's office and engineering appear at the next Public Safety Committee meeting to provide an update on the changes approved last year for the Church Street and Webster Street. This is a committee report also. It's a committee report also.
We have a committee, these are all.
These are all committee reports. That, I was, yeah, I was gonna read what it is, but I think it is.
Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has to do with, I see somewhere in this committee report that I was reading earlier. Now, we all know that there was a gentleman here earlier on the Liberty Street issue. Is this part of that?
Yes.
It is and it isn't. The peace code on the traffic has to do with the traffic flow for Church Street and Webster Street. There was a brief discussion at the committee about how that would affect Liberty Street, and it was decided at, in the meeting that we needed more information from the Liberty Street residents. So, at this point, nothing has been suggested regarding Liberty.
Well, just to, I've received several calls, and there was six people up here from Liberty Street, other than the gentleman spoke. They're very much against this street being reversed. You know, they live there, as we know, and, you know, I don't think it's such a great idea either, the more I think about it. But I just wanted to let my feelings be known that I'm not in favor of the reversal of the one-way on Liberty Street. But I am in favor of fixing the church area.
The question on Liberty Street is really not part of this. That was, that was a, that was a.
Okay.
Brief discussion. This is strictly on reversing the routes for Webster and Church.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion?
Prefer to traffic.
Prefer to traffic. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 12.
Mr. President?
Item number 12.
Could we suspend the rules and take items number 12 and 14 collectively?
Second a motion.
We have a motion to take items number 12 and 14 collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item, so these are committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee reports. Item number 12, that the Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee review the job description and duties of the legislative aide position and make recommendations for changes if necessary.
Would you read the report, Ken?
Motion to accept the committee report?
We have a motion to accept the committee report. Well, we haven't, clerk hasn't read it yet.
Oh.
We're, we're trying to get into this, reading these reports, or at least summarizing before we approve them.
So, committee on Legislative Affairs met on March 8, 2018. The committee considered a resolution offered by Counselor Napolitano that the Legislative Affairs Committee reviews the job description and duties of the legislative position and make recommendations for changes if necessary. City Clerk Sergeant Canolio was also present. Counselor Capone provided the committee with an amended version of the legislative aide job description based on comments made at the last meeting. The committee voted in favor of the amendments. The committee voted to report back to the city council with a recommendation for favorable action on the revised job description for the legislative aide position. Yep. Okay. But we're gonna, now you don't have to meet the motion.
Okay, okay. That's fine.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe everyone has a copy. What we had done as a committee is we merged all the information from Legislative Code, the existing job description that Ms. McCory had, and we took input from the entire membership, tried to merge into one format, got it out to everybody to take a look at. Hopefully, everyone is okay with it. The other thing that we did in committee was talk about the six-month probationary period that was requested, and that it be left that the candidates have to undergo a Microsoft Office proficiency test to be administered by our city clerk. So, I would ask that we accept the committee report and the job description as presented.
Do I have a second?
Accept the committee report.
So, we have a motion to accept the committee report, place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On the resolution, we have a motion to take, accept the description as amended by, or created by the Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 14. Mr. President, is a resolution of the counselors Wayne Matuski, John Leo McKinnon, and Stephen Simonelli, that the sitting council, when filling the legislative aide position, consider placing a probationary job performance period of six months to evaluate chosen candidate.
Second a motion.
Yep. Accept the committee report, place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Hanlon?
On the motion for favorable action, I think that six months is too long. It's a long time to have someone come along and say, you're, you're at the mercy of this, this board for six months. I mean, I think like maybe six months. I mean, six weeks or five or four weeks would be a better, a better thing. I can't say someone that we really want to work for has to say, for six months, I may not have this job. I think we can learn if a person's good enough in a month.
Counselor Marchese?
That would be my, my, my idea to change it to one month.
I agree with Mr. Hanlon, but I'd like to see if there's someone going to go into that seat to get, to get, ask you to go and appoint somebody, so they have a chance to work with Caroline for the two months. Because that does, six months is nothing, because you come into the summertime, and there's nothing really going on here. So, for them to learn, they should walk into it. We have Caroline there for April, May, and June, whatever.
We'll, we'll be talking more about this on the item regarding filling the position, but we've tried to set a timeframe that allows for as much overlap with Caroline before she retires for that purpose. We want to address that. Beyond that, Caroline's not available to us in June, so they're gonna need to sink or swim, unfortunately, after they have to retire.
Well, we, we probably should have this call for the appointment like in the next week or two.
It's, it's on the agenda tonight. Counselor Capone?
The one thing that I do want to point out to the membership, Mr. President, is that this is an at-will position. So, even though we have a timeframe, we could, you could amend it down from six to three months if you want to, but at the end of the day, this person has to perform, and they have to perform consistently. And if they don't, we can get rid of them at any time. This isn't a term of time. So, this is an at-will employee, and we've made sure, to make sure that's gonna get in, into the advertisement to that extent. And that way, if the person is doing the job, excellent, because it's vital to this body. But if you have somebody in that position who's not doing the job, it is an at-will employee, and we can't terminate at any time.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, for Counselor Simonelli. Originally, in the, in the thought of the revolution, resolution, it was a three-month period, but then it was brought to our attention that perhaps, that the state overrides that in, in hiring, and it went up to six months. But 90, 90 days would be more than appropriate, but it got changed because it's a state law?
No. No, it's, it's not a state law. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. President. What I had said is, the state gives everybody a probation period of six months, okay? Not that it's a law, but if you get hired on the state, they give, because you do have to learn the job. You have to give people a chance to learn the job. Caroline's been here 33 years. She makes it look easy, but it's not an easy job. She makes it look easy, but it's not an easy job. So you can't say to someone after a month, if they do something that you don't like, or you have a personal attack, say, "We don't like you," or, "I don't think you're doing the job right." You've got to give the person at least six months to learn everything. I mean, everybody on the outside always makes everything look so easy, all right? No matter what you read, if you read the paper, you read the blog, they know everything, okay? But it's hard. It's not hard. You have to do everything. You have to do it right. You have to go through the channels, and people have the right to learn. We have to give them a chance to learn, no matter who we hire. So that was the thing, is why you give them six months. Thank you.
If I, if I just would remind everyone, this person will be learning the job throughout the summer session at a much reduced pace. That's giving somebody the extra time to be able to learn the job. Think about it for a moment. Councilman Hamlin.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Chairman. Oh, and one guy gets the, the, right? Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I agree with Councilor Capone that the guy's an at-will employee, and he can be fired, let go at any time whatsoever. So there is no need to have a six-hour probationary period. He's on probation for the rest of his life. So there is no need to have a probationary period. Tell him he can have the job, he's on the upper, a lifetime position if he, if he straightens himself out. I'm sorry, he's at, what is it, three years? You gotta, gotta get point.
No.
Okay, no term. All right, so, so that we should just, just put him in for, for the, for the rest of time. If he doesn't, in three years, if we don't like him, in two years if we don't like him, we can let him go. If it's a, if it's a female that has a lot of education, isn't really, doesn't really really want the job, she only wants to come for three or four months and we find her, she can go too. We can't let any, anybody go because of the at-will probation, a person rather, and they need no probationary period.
And I should remind everyone, too, that, you know, to let somebody go, you need to have grounds.
Yes.
They have rights as well.
That's right.
So it's, it's just not, you can just walk in and dump somebody. You can't do that. If you're a worker in a, in a position where you've hired people in a, in a legitimate private sector, you know that that's, there is, there is all signs of this that you need to wear with, work with.
That's correct.
With probation, you can't fire them for any reason.
Anytime. Anytime.
You can fire them, well, for any reason.
Anyway.
With the six-month probation.
Nope.
They're standing up to our expectations. Ask if they're not performing.
Well, that's not performing to, to standard. I have multiple speakers here, and remember, you only get to speak twice. Councilman Hamlin, are you fin, are you through with it?
Absolutely.
Councilman Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke to the cosponsors of this resolution, Council McKinnon and Seminelli. They agree with Councilman Hamlin that three months is a, is a good playing field, and we'll, I'd like to make a motion. You know, the, the reason for this is that, this is the first I've heard. I thought it was a, a term, two years, four years. I like this, but, you know, you want to give everybody a chance, and three months is plenty of time. Six months is a little bit long. If you don't know this job in three months, and as I said, that's their first wall of defense for us as members of the council, is that office. You know, with, with the casino coming in, there are going to be people coming to City Hall that may want to meet one of us or all of us at some point, besides the mayor's office, and I can guarantee you that. So they've got to be professional and courteous and right on the ball here, because this city is changing real quick, and we need somebody in there with a personality that doesn't play politics and doesn't want to hang around in Everett Square with a sign on Saturdays. So I'd like to amend this to read, "Three months to evaluate." That's what it is. In other words, this will come up after whoever's appointed, three months from that date, we will say, as a party, "Well, we have some issues, maybe you should sharpen up here or sharpen up there, or maybe you're doing a great job." And a person should know that they're doing a good job if they are. So I think three months is plenty of time, and the sponsors agreed with me, and we agree with Councilman Hamlin that three months would be fine.
Second a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for, is it six or is it three? It hasn't been amended.
Amended.
They need to amend it first.
I amend the motion.
You have a motion to amend it. You have a second.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the sentiment of this, but I don't think it's appropriate until we know when the individual will be hired and how long they'll be working aside Ms. McCory. I think it's a little bit putting the cart before the horse. Are we talking the three months while they may be working here or after, when they're solo? I just need some more clarification before I take a vote on the intent.
Actually, you can't make that determination. You can't hire somebody and then determine whether they get three or six months. That's unlawful. I don't believe that's legal.
I'm saying, if, if we pass this, and therefore, later on, we decide when the individual actually, actually be hired, how long you'll be here. That period could be the same amount of time that they're here working with Ms. McCory. We don't know that.
They go on the payroll.
They go on the payroll the day they, they, they start. But here's the other thing, too. This is a resolution. Okay, you need to amend the Legislative Code if you want to make this binding.
Or by order.
But right now, this is a resolution. Resolutions are not the same as an order. It doesn't require us. We'd need to refire it, refile it as an order.
Mr. President.
One moment. Councilman Capone.
If the clerk could explain, I think he, he has an order, but...
So just, just very briefly, there is, these are resolutions, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. What happened is with the legis, the, the committee came together and wrote something. They sent it to the city clerk. Tonight, you are, you are going to put in order to fill the city council legislative aid position. And when I read that order, you will see that the probationary period is in the official order that is written, been written by your clerk. That is where you can amend it or not. Whatever we write in that order is the official order that will be posted in the newspaper, posted on the website, and, and, I'm sorry?
Right.
Yes, and I'm going to explain it. So it's item number thirty-three. I already put it on the agenda at the request of the president, and I will, I'll explain it. These are resolutions. These should be just accepted, placed on file, and ended. And your resolution put something on, put, the wheels of motion for me to write an order, just so you know.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We refer this back to sponsor and discuss it with the...
Second a motion.
...city clerk after.
All right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Committee report and...
Okay, so we've already accepted the committee report, we placed it on file. So a motion to refer this back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, clerk will read item number thirteen.
Mr. President, we're, we're, this is still fresh in our mind. Can we suspend the rules and take item thirty-three?
Absolutely. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to take item number thirty-three.
It's been, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three is an order, order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president in order to fill the city council legislative aid position.
Would you like me to read the official order?
Yes, please.
I'm going to read the official order that we are going to post in the, advertise the job for. It reads as follows, "That the city council, through the city clerk, cause an advertisement to be posted for a period of not less than two weeks for the purpose of soliciting resumes of residents interested in seeking the position of legislative aid to the city council and city clerk, which will be vacated on May 31st of 2018, and that the committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections receive said resumes to interview each candidate, and that the committee make a recommendation to the full city council no later than April 23rd, 2018. The applicants shall take an exam to test their proficiency in Microsoft Office. The candidate hired shall serve as an at-will employee with a term of office that shall, excuse me, with a probationary term of office, period, to commence once they are hired for six months."
What was the last, which, last?
Which, it said that a probationary period will be six months. This is where the order that you want to, if you want to amend it. It's through this official order.
Fable to three months, favorable action on the order.
Second a motion. Second a motion. Okay, we have a motion to amend to three months. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Fable action on the order.
Fable action on the order. Clerk will read the rule.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Favorable action as amended. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor Florio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matusky?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President, and you have passed that order.
Okay, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, Mr. Chairman, is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Two, Section Four of the City of Everett Charter and Chapter Seven, Section Seven dash one-six-three of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett, the president of the city council shall receive a stipend of $2,400, not including the annual salary of the city council, beginning January 1st, 2020. The stipend of the president shall receive a 2% increase annually to coincide with the annual 2% increase for all city council salaries.
Thank you.
Councilor Napolitano?
Okay, there isn't a member here that has served in that seat that hasn't expressed a concern about how much workload and additional...
You have nothing to put in, you make a motion. You make a motion for favorable action.
Sorry. Actually, we have to accept the committee report.
That's not correct.
May I read the court's decision?
Excuse me?
Accept the committee report.
May the, accept the city report. Favorable action?
Moving to second, accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Do you have a motion? Favorable action?
The matter's before you, as we speak, Councilor...
Second.
Councilor Napolitano.
On the motion. I could.
On the motion.
All right, on the motion.
There isn't a member here who has served in the council president that I haven't spoken to who has expressed the fact that it's, there is considerably more time and effort expended to be able to keep these meetings straight. Take, for example, a good, a good reason, tonight. It may appear that I started the meeting, I might have been a little unprepared, but I was in meetings with the mayor's office and the, and the, and the, the mayor's chief of staff from quarter six until we started at seven o'clock. So there's things constantly going on in that, and I think that, in that respect, the council president does need to have some additional, you know, compensation for that. This does not apply to me. This does not apply to the next president. This is something that would go into effect beginning in the next session. So I'd ask for you for favorable action. I don't get it. I don't get it. It's not for me.
It's not for you.
It's not for me. And I do want to reiterate, this is not for me. This is not for the next council president. This is for the first council president in the next elected session. That's why it says 2020. Okay? So I would ask for favorable action on the item.
A point, point of order, actually, a point of order on it, if I may, Mr. President. This, this matter was in committee, and the committee actually requested further time. So it's not before the body. However, if the body wanted to debate it, they could take it from the committee.
Correct.
So it's up to the body. Right now, the committee had requested further time. The reason why the committee requested further time is only two of our four members were there, and we didn't think that it would be a full committee opinion...
Correct.
...if only half the members were there. However, the matter is available. If the body wants to pull it from the committee and discuss it and debate it tonight, we can, and I've got no problem with that, so...
I believe this should go back to committee. That's what committees are for, and unfortunately, members, members were not present, so my motion would be to send this back to committee, to work it out, and give us a full report.
The, the motion was to grant further time officially, just so you know, from the committee.
And it, and if I could, the confusion here was righted by a motion to accept the committee report where there is no committee report. So again, I apologize for that. I think this should stay in committee and grant further time.
Second a motion. Thank you.
Second on that? Second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. It's back to committee.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if you take item number thirty-four, please.
Next item will be thirty-four.
Item number thirty-four, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, a resolution requesting the chief of police to assign a uniformed auxiliary police officer to attend all regular meetings of the city council to act as a sergeant of arms.
Refer this to Public Safety Committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it?
I was so moved.
Motion made to take item number thirty-one.
Second a motion.
I'll wait for you to do the motion, Mr. President. Item thirty-one, yeah, they made a motion.
Okay, the motion is take item number thirty-one. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael McLaughlin and Councilor Michael Marchese to invite Omar Eazy, Mayor Di Maria, and Michael Vetrano, Vetrano, to our next Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Committee meeting to discuss the resident ordinance that was put in place for police and fire.
I'm going to make you quick.
Marchese.
Yep, we're going to refer it. I'd like to refer it to the Government Operations, Public Safety, and Service to actually find out if there's anybody enforcing this.
Second a motion.
Well, it can't be enforced, because I know half the people who've been hired don't live in the city, and we made this for every people, and it's, it's not right. So that would be my motion.
With a motion, second, to send this to Public Safety, Public Service Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will resume, resume back to the regular order of business.
Which is?
Item number fifteen.
Item, item number fifteen, Mr. President, is a committee of the whole report to invite Senator Sal DiDomenico to the March 12th meeting of, to discuss earmarks the senator has got approval on for the City of Everett.
Would you like me to read the, Councilor Delasola?
I'm going to, for next meeting on the 26th, is it?
Yep.
Twenty-sixth, for next meeting. Hold this over.
Do I have a second?
Is this going to be part of our regular meeting?
I've had communication with, with the, with the senator. Senator does not have a full-blown presentation. He wasn't even aware of this until, until very recently. Just has a 10-minute update on, on, on some of the earmarks he's working on. He'd just like to be able, he doesn't see the need to have a separate meeting for that. He doesn't believe he's going to take up that much time.
Well, 10 minutes ends up in two hours in this place, on one item, okay? So I, I understand he doesn't have a presentation, but I don't mind being here all night, but I have an issue when we just keep talking, talking over the same thing over and over again. So this is about the schools. We had a presentation. It's back on the agenda. I don't even know why it's back on the agenda, to be honest with you. Now we have 500,000 in front of us, so what else do we need to know? I mean, to me, I'm voting against it, period.
I don't believe the earmarks here are specifically for the schools. These are on, on monies coming to the City of Everett. Whatever your, whatever your pleasure is, if the senator is willing to come in, he does not feel it needs a full, a special meeting, but it's whatever you decide.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, out of, out of courtesy and respect to the senator, if he believes it'll be 10 minutes, we can put 10 minutes on the calendar. If it turns out that it, it becomes a more lengthy thing, then you retain the jurisdiction to refer it to a committee.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yep, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second on the...
The motion to invite him at the next meeting.
Yes, I mean, he is the state senator. You know, okay, you know...
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will take item number sixteen, please.
Item number sixteen is a committee on community and business development report. That new subsections be accepted regarding purchase of annual media stickers. This was requested to grant further time and invite the parking clerk and representative of the mayor's office to the next meeting.
Committee report, place on file.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the committee report, place it on file. All in favor?
Nope, grant further time. Yes.
Yep, and invite the individuals. Grant further time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number seventeen.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese that the city consider placing signs on Beecham Street eliminating the left-hand turn Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and also put added sign on Route 16, sending cars and trucks to Second Street.
Council Marchese.
That, that coincided with number twenty-seven. Refer back to sponsor, please.
Second a motion. We have a motion to refer item number seventeen back to sponsor, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty.
Item number twenty, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that we honor the wishes of the family of Mr. Ali, the owner of Angelina Subs, to have a dedicated square at the corner of Broadway and Parker Street in honor of him and his family's service to the city and citizens of Everett for decades, decades. According to his religion, I believe this needs to be done 40 days after his passing, and that the date should be on or around the 14th of February, and that his sign designation would also be considered for display.
Council McKinnon.
I think so. Thank you, Mr. President, to the city clerk. Was there any response back from the mayor's office?
There was a response from the Veterans Service Director.
Yeah, but I wanted the response from the mayor's office. I know that there was a square there dedicated already to one of the families, the Snook family, I believe it was.
You weren't allowed to use the same square.
But there was also a mention of a bench or a plaque that was going to be either erected or placed there, so I just wanted to get some feedback from them.
Yeah, I think they're doing a comprehensive, if I'm not mistaken, they're doing a plan with, I believe, Chief of Staff O'Donnell with multiple. I mean, I know we're looking at the one for the Council Seminelli said, and there are a bunch. I don't have anything back from them at the moment.
What I'll do is I'll just hold this over to the next meeting with a response back from them. Either a plaque or a bench. That was mentioned.
Would you repeat your motion, please?
The motion would be to send it to the mayor's office with a reply back at our next meeting on a plaque or a bench for this family.
Second. We have a motion to send it to the mayor's office, a request for a plaque or a bench. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Opposed? Okay. Clerk will read item number 21.
Item number 21. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that the newly hired clinician and program coordinator for the opioid task force that the city council and administration had funded to help with the opioid problem become before the city council to update the city council on their progress and new initiatives throughout the city at their first meeting in February.
Council McKinnon.
I'd like to hold this over to the next meeting, reason being is the clinician is on vacation, and she's not able to attend tonight, and she has most of the data that we're gonna need to hear, so if we could do that, that would be great, to hold it over to the next meeting.
Second. Okay, we're motioning to postpone this to the next meeting. Council McKinnon.
Matusky.
Matusky.
Senior moment. Mr. President-
You guys are indistinguishable sometimes.
We're very similar in names, I understand, but I just want to recognize our colleague, lady and gentleman. Councilman McKinnon, as we all know, was the chairperson of the opioid committee that was established a few years ago. He is being honored by the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick. I believe it's Thursday evening, and you know, I like being on committees, but this man, for hours on end, would have the sheriff here, all the state police, drug experts, concerned residents of Everett, Council McKinnon, and I am so happy that he got recognized by this group. He's done a wonderful job in that committee, and the Friendly Sons really picked a good guy and a good colleague of ours, and I congratulate him for that. Thank you.
If I would request, next time, Councilman, the comments are on the motion. Save the platitudes for after the motion, but I share your agreement. I share your sentiment. Council McKinnon has done a great job for us in this area, and he should be honored. All in, so we have a motion to postpone this till the next meeting. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I would like to congratulate Council McKinnon. I was on that committee, and he did work very hard, but I would also like to acknowledge that Council De Piero was the one that brought this forward. So I believe they should both get recognition. Thank you.
Okay, we've-
Beat that to death.
Clerk will read item number 22.
Item number 22 is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. An ordinance to amend the Dumpster Fee Schedule, Section 16-78 Maintenance of the Revised Ordances of the City of Everett.
Favorable action on the order?
This is a foreign moment.
For favorable action on the order. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Del Sol.
Yes.
Councilor De Florio.
Yes.
Councilor De Piero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor Matusky.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
10 ayes, 0 nays, you have enrolled.
Okay, you have enrolled item number 22. Clerk will read item number 23.
Item number 23, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, an ordinance amending the fire permit fee schedule, Section 18-15 Permit Fee Schedule of the Revised Ordances of the City of Everett.
Favorable action on the order?
Second. Okay, we're motion for favorable action on the order. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
And again, this is foreign ordainment, so we know. Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Del Sol.
Yes.
Councilor De Florio.
Yes.
Councilor De Piero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor Matusky.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor Seminelli.
Yes.
Councilor, excuse me, President Napolitano.
Yes.
That would be 9 ayes, 0 nays, Mr. President. You have ordained.
You have ordained item number 24. Clerk will read item number 26.
Item number 26, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne A. Matusky that Mr. Sousa from Community Development appeared to update on the issue of the municipal parking lot between Broadway and school streets next meeting on the long-awaited fence and landscaping improvements.
Council Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did receive a communication from Mr. Sousa from Community Development. I'd just like to read it real quickly. Please find a breakdown of the work to be performed in our more than one lot. This spring, the city will restore landscape areas, which hopefully will be done at that location, and architectural work will be done, and it's kind of vague, but I am in contact with Mr. Sousa. I want to see that little municipal parking lot look like it should look, but it's all part of the big improvement from Everett Square all the way down to that area of Broadway. So I would like to refer this back to sponsor, and I will place it up, but I'm looking for a fence in landscaping there. I've waited like two years for this at this point, or three years. No, it's going on three years now. They told me a while ago, they did put a fence on one side, but I think that was private property, you know, which does look very nice. But the problem we're having here is the law office next door, people think that's part of the parking lot, and they're parking in there, and it's really not fair to the guy. But there's no more meters now, as we all know, they have the kibosh thing there, and so people aren't leaning over putting money in anymore, so that's really solved, but it does need to be cleaned up. In my next piece of business, I'll address some more. So I refer this back to sponsor.
Second. Motion to second to refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 29.
Excuse me. Item number 29, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne A. Matusky that ECTV consider placing the agenda on their broadcasts prior to the meeting, and also if the closed caption could be installed for the hearing impaired.
Council Matusky.
I'd like to refer this to Ever Cable TV. The gentleman that worked in the office said he was probably able to do this, so that was approached to put this on, and that's why it's on here. So I refer this to Ever Cable TV. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. On the piece, I'd like to commend the sponsor on this piece. I also received some correspondence on it, and there's a whole, well, first of all, with the agenda, many people don't know what's happening until it happens at night. This way, if they have some lead time, or I think on our website, we might have it listed, so that's helpful, but it makes it more convenient for folks if it's on TV. And then the bigger one is with the closed caption. There's a whole segment of our population that isn't able to follow along with the meeting. So I think it's a great suggestion. I wholeheartedly support it, and I commend the council for the piece.
Okay, we have a motion to send this to ECTV. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 30.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne A. Matusky to the city engineer appear at the April 9th meeting to update on much-needed improvements on street and sidewalk repairs to the following: Cabot, Revia, Second, and Bow Streets that have become unsafe and unsightly.
Council Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I put these three streets on, four streets, because I travel them a lot, and I look at them a lot. I gotta tell you, and this isn't just because of this winter season we've had, these streets, one is on the entrance to the stadium. The sidewalks and streets are, it's a disgrace. Now, we've got all our parks pretty much under control. We've got pretty good schools now under control. We've got to concentrate on the infrastructure, and these streets have got to be on the list, Mr. President. I went down Bow Street the other day. It's like a war zone. Potholes, foxholes, whatever you want to call them, it is disgraceful, and I bumped into one woman who actually tripped the other day on the street. Second Street is just, in Cabot and Revia Street are probably, I want to say they're the worst streets in Everett. I gotta tell you, if anybody here takes a ride down those streets, and mostly because of these utility companies that come before us at every meeting, oh, we want to fix the pole, we want to do this, the gas company, they want to fix it. Well, guess what? When they leave, a year later, the street is sunk down. They don't repair anything correctly. We've got to be a little more careful, and it's really not the city's fault, because the street was in pretty good shape before they put a strip all the way down the length of it that sank six inches. It's really got to, you know, we really have to get this under control, and that's why I'd like to have the city engineer here to explain when, what these, these streets have got to be on the list. I gotta tell you, they can't wait any longer, and after the snowstorm we get, it's just a mess. Second, and we all know that, Councilman Capone, he brought this up last year. I challenge any street in the ever, I know there's some other streets that are bad, but these are, Bow Street is a mess, and I know that we give licenses out. That's why I'm going to be a little more cautious when having Ever Source, who doesn't provide electricity to this city, to dig up our streets all the time. I want them to put it back. I don't know, they did some work on Main Street. I don't know if that's sunk in yet, but they don't repair it correctly. They rip up the sidewalks and put hardtop there, the black hardtop, and it looks like a mess. But needless to say, these streets, we've got to get our streets completed here. This is just in one little area, and they're, you know, I feel bad. I wouldn't want to, you know, where I live, my street isn't too bad, and I gotta tell you, a lot of trucks go by, but these people must be here in potholes rattling and everything else. It is really a mess, and we know this, Councilman Napolitano, Mr. President.
I travel these streets quite frequently myself.
You see what I'm saying? So let's get the city engineer here. If anybody wants to add a street to this, I don't mind. Let's give the man a fair chance to address some of our concerns, but we've got to get, there's got to be a rating system that has these streets in it, because from what I can see, and I don't travel everywhere, but they are going to be the worst streets in Everett.
What do you want to send it?
I would like the city engineer to appear at our April 9th meeting to update us on the improvements on these particular streets. If anybody wants to add a street, I could do it right now by amending it, but to be fair to the engineer, I want to know if these particular streets are going to be on the list to be repaired this year.
Councilman, if I could make a suggestion, our rules prohibit you from putting it out that far. The engineer is appearing at Public Safety to discuss streets. I'd recommend and suggest that you send it there, because he's already going to be there to address the similar issues, and that would be the best point to be able to do that. Any member that has additional streets to add to that, I concur, let contact the committee chairman of that Public Safety, and you can add it on.
I don't have a problem sending this to committee. The problem is, is my time schedule isn't as flexible as some other members here. So if I'm not at the committee meeting, I want, you know, at least if he was here at a regular meeting, which I have not a problem with, but I, you know, when a committee meeting is planned, I may have a family commitment, as you all know. So, you know, my time is a little different than everybody else's, but I will speak to the president, I mean, the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, and he knows how I feel about these streets, and if I'm not there, I want to get the update on these streets. Thank you.
Council Del Sol.
Some of the streets that Council Matusky talked about, the gas company was down there, Cabot Street, definitely in front of Everett Stadium, that they're all done there, but it does leave a mess. So I'd like to see if we can get a list of where the contractors were in the last year, because they may be, I know when I do the same work, they may be responsible to come back in the spring and do this. We don't want to, if we're paying for this, I don't want to pay for the damage they did. If they made the damage, they should be responsible. If they go curb-to-curb or half the street, repair what they damaged, so I think it's a great piece. The next meeting, when they're up there, we'll, we can ask them those questions, hopefully add their information for us. Thank you.
Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to agree with Councilman Matusky, and also all the councils. Streets are a tad bad. I go to Cabot Street a lot. It's a sort of a cut through for me, and I come by the, that's a bad, bad street. I go down Second Street, I think that might be the worst street.
Second Street, definitely. I lost the tie.
I think that's the worst one.
Revia.
But you know, we have to go back to when they, when the companies came along, and the gas company and the electric company both came along and worked on Ferry Street, and I remember when they're all here, they're going to put it back into perfect condition and so on and so forth. I don't know when they intend to do that, but so far, they haven't done that. Winthrop Street. Winthrop Street, two years ago, was a nice, smooth, beautiful street. There's a hole now every 15 feet. It's sunken in. It's damaged. You can't drive over it. You can't have two cars pass anymore. One's going to pull up and stop while the other one goes around the smooth side, then you can go through absolutely terrible streets in the ever. I don't know if just talking to the engineer, if anything can be done about that, but I think they have to come up with a program, and the program has to be a list of these streets that have to be done, and they know where the streets are. We don't have to give it to them. They know where these streets are. That's what they're jobbing, you know?
Capital improvement.
And they have to be taken care of.